Good afternoon, everyone. Tonight's meeting of the Board of Education. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see everybody here. Thank you for coming and joining us tonight. Tonight's meeting of the Board of Education is called to order at 4:02 PM in open session. Tonight, we have requests addressing closed-session agenda items. While meetings of the governing board are not public meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. And the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to 21 minutes as per Board bylaw 9322.2. Could we please have Amy Mustafa to the podium?
Hi, Amy Mustafa. Good afternoon, President Garza and board members. I am here today to urge you to give the district authority to agree to BTA's salary proposal. Yesterday's bargaining was very productive. BTA feels very positive about the district's willingness to listen and collaborate. We're very close to having an agreement on salary. We need your support. Change is on the horizon, and together, we can make it happen. Bellflower can be the district that families, students, and teachers want to be a part of. BUSD is having trouble hiring and retaining staff with our current salary schedule. You have taken many steps in the right direction. I urge you to let go of the previous mindset of scarcity and fear. USD has always saved money for a rainy day. When it was actually raining, the district did not spend the money. As a result of this, the reserve continued to grow. There is plenty of ongoing money. Giving teachers the money we deserve is not going to hurt the district financially. The district is very healthy, and it's time to compensate the people who work with the students. Please continue to move BUSD towards success by compensating the people who are working with students every day. We taught and we persevered without leadership for most of this school year. Teachers can be counted on to do what is best for the kids. It is time to compensate the teachers. We need your support now. Please vote to accept BTA's salary proposal. Be the change that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mustafa. Next, we have BTA President Linda Atkins-Arnt. Please come to the podium.
Good afternoon, President Garza, School Board Administration, and Superintendent Dr. Droudi. It's been an exciting few weeks getting to know our new superintendent. It's been exciting to hear when he goes to the sites, his plans, and his vision. I've been reading the books he's recommended. I am excited for a change. I've been here, and you know, I've been here forever. I'm retiring on June 3rd, and I'm excited to go out on such a positive feeling and positive notes. We need to all work together, like I said, one of the others. We are stronger together. We're better together. We can make better decisions when everything, especially when we've talked about with the superintendent, about focusing on sites and what sites need, not on everyone being a cookie cutter. So I just want to say to you, please consider our proposal and accept it. We know first, we need to catch up, and then future, we need to keep up so that we can be competitive and serve our students well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnt. Next, we have... Are there any other non-agenda items? Cards? Nope. Okay. Perfect. So...
But I'm an agenda item.
Yes.
Never mind.
Okay. Thank you so much. Just wanted to confirm. So, at this time, the board will recess to closed session.
I'm an agenda item.
I know, but it's for closed session.
Oh, it's for closed session. It's not now?
It is now.
It is now. You're talking about in closed session, aren't you?
Yes, closed session.
Right, so it's an item for closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's checked off agenda only. But come on up.
Okay.
Sorry. Come on up.
I teach kindergarten.
Okay, so all of them. Thank you. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you, inspiring leaders. I'm going to manifest that by putting it out in the universe. What I want to tell you is yesterday in a decade, we have never had a bargaining session like we had yesterday. Our new superintendent wants to foster creative conflict, and he did it. And it's important that we do that, that we sit in a space where there's a lot of discomfort, because we feel very uncomfortable, but there's never been a safe form to have it. We are not always going to agree, but we have to be able to agree to disagree and still work through that conflict. And yesterday was the first time that we felt, we felt heard, we felt valued, we felt equal to the process and as people, and in a decade, we have not. And it's not that we haven't been valued, it's how we feel. Simon Sinek has developed the golden circle, and how he works with organizations is this. He said, "Every organization is functioning in three venues: what, how, and why." This district historically has started from the what. And what has been pushed onto the board is that essentially, you are custodians of the budget. That is what always we hear. So we can't do this, we can't do this, we can't do this, because we have to protect the budget. I want you to see how the disparity of that means, that you don't see your real purpose is that you are the caretakers of the children. The budget is in subordination to the children and the needs of the children. So what I would like to do is I would like to encourage you to do what he says. Start with why. Instead of starting with the what, start with the why. And in case you don't have one, I wrote one for us. You start with what you believe. We, in BUSD, believe all children can learn. We believe in equity, diversity, and access. We believe our most valuable resource is people, and that's what we invest in. We invest our money, we invest our capital, we invest our time in the people. No building is going to educate a kid. No matter if it falls down, we'll go outside and teach them. We do it all the time. You are not going to get what you... You're going to get back in what you invest in, and it is only going to be in people, from the person who cleans the floor so the kids can sit on it, to the person who stands in the front of the room. You want PR? It's going to be your teachers. It's going to be your custodial staff. It's going to be your face in the district. Good PR is doing the right thing, and then having people talk about it. That's really easy for your PR firm to spin. Oh, wait, they don't have to spin it. They just need to tell the truth out into the community. So if we lead with the why, we have a chance to make a really big difference. And the reality is that what you do, what you do, serves as proof of what you believe. So today, what I'm encouraging you is I want to empower you to say yes to the money. If you have to say no, say no later. Say yes now. You just hired this person who's an inspiring leader. But what's happening is there's two things going on right now. You have resistance, and you have perception. So right now, the perception is, we are not valued, whether we are or we aren't. And the resistance is, we are not valued. And people check out when they don't feel valued. This system is set up just like your brain. Externally, you have your neocortex, and that's where logic, and that's where your voice and all the language is. But the place that drives motivation, inspiration, loyalty, is your amygdala in the center of your brain. Lead with why. You guys are the leaders. Make the change.
Next, we have Christina Williams. Please come on up.
Good afternoon, Dr. Droudi and board members. I'm here today to speak about being a teacher. I'm not going to give you my background story. Each of us became a teacher for different reasons. We have different life experiences, but we all came to be teachers in BUSD. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, what do we have in common with teachers in surrounding districts? We all lesson plan, teach content, serve on committees, participate in activities, take care of students, the list goes on and on. My next question is, what do we not have in common with these teachers in surrounding districts? I came up with two things: a huge reserve and comparable pay. We do the same job, but we do not get paid close to what they get. All of these districts pay their teachers thousands of dollars more per year. Some of those districts pay their teachers more than $20,000 more per year. Our reserve increases every year, even though the budget is proposed as a year of deficit spending. Yet, at the end of every year, we have millions of dollars that were not spent and are put into the reserves. Why can't you afford to pay us a competitive salary? We've heard various reasons: deficit spending, declining enrollment, and saving for a rainy day. When was the last time we ended the year in a deficit? Enrollment is declining all over the state, but other districts still give their employees good raises. We just went through the biggest rainy day of all, the pandemic. Yet, the district did not have to spend any of the reserve and actually added to the reserve during the pandemic. The reasoning does not support the claim that you cannot afford to pay us a comparable salary. So why don't we deserve to be compensated the way teachers are in surrounding districts? We do the same job. We work just as hard as they do. Some of you are educators, and you know how much we put into this job. Other districts deal with the same issues BUSD does, yet they continue to give their employees good raises. When the reserve goes up every year because you are not actually using the money you were given, you send a message to the staff that we are not valued. Today is your opportunity to show you that you value the role we play in educating the students in our community. We work hard every day and deserve to be paid a comparable salary to teachers in surrounding districts. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Williams. Could we please have Robin Moots-Balog come to the podium, please?
My name is Robin Moots-Balog. I've been a teacher here for 15 years. I've also been a member of the Executive Board of the Union for about six years now. I'm coming to speak to you independently and not under union direction. There's a quote that makes me think about the teachers here at BUSD. "For where your treasure is, your heart will follow." If something is of value to you, it is evident by your priorities. For the past 15 years, it has been very evident that the priorities in BUSD have been to save money and build a huge reserve. It has not been to serve our students or take care of the employees in this district. I'm here this afternoon to ask that you continue the tides of change and the healing for our district. I'm asking you that you make the changes necessary to pay our teachers a fair wage. Your teachers have endured excessive change in leadership at our school sites, lack of adequate support for students and staff, increasingly difficult working conditions, all while our district has made broken promises about future compensation and claimed that we were on the verge of bankruptcy with every financial report. After looking at the compensation for the surrounding districts, it is clear that your teachers are in crisis. I'm tired of fighting for what my teachers deserve year after year. The work to rule, the lack of feeling valued, all while working conditions continue to get harder and harder. Students are coming out of a pandemic with an academic deficit, they're emotionally scarred, and the everyday challenges in the classroom become increasingly more difficult, all to find out that I'm making 18% to 22% less than teachers in our neighboring district. I've been listening to many teachers talk about leaving the district. Who can blame them? Maybe, as Dr. Droudi put it, "It is time to pack up our marbles and go home." Younger teachers are seeing that they cannot afford to stay, while older teachers are being offered more years of service credit in surrounding districts, with an increase in pay and the hope of better working conditions than we have in BUSD. We also have many teachers who are near retirement age, who cannot afford to retire with the current cost of living. Imagine what $20,000 a year could do to change their lives. I'm certain that every member of the school board would fight to do what is best for their own families. I hope now, it is with the same passion that you fight to make your employees' wages equitable to our surrounding districts. Many people's futures are in limbo based on your offer for compensation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, Ms. Balog. Hope I say this correctly. Austin Cross? Please approach the podium.
To the members of the board and our new superintendent, Dr. Droudi, my name is Austin Cross. I am in my third year as a teacher at Mayfair High School, but if you count student teaching and substitute teaching, this is my fifth year with the Bellflower Unified School District. I am speaking to you now because I am the next generation of teacher. I am the one who was hired to replace a retiring generation of teacher, that of one Mrs. Alex Fletcher. And I mention my generation because on Monday, Dr. Droudi visited Mayfair High School, and he said to us that my generation cannot afford to buy a house. And he's right. And the sad reality is, that's the one thing I've only ever wanted. My sister-in-law is a teacher. She teaches TK and lives out in Moreno Valley. If I were to teach over there, I'd be making about $8,000 more, and my rent each month would be about $1,000 less. And instead, where I live here, my rent's just gone up by $200 a month. The pay has not risen to meet that cost of living adjustment. So I come to you today to ask yourselves why it is that a teacher who works for the Bellflower Unified School District cannot afford a home in the Bellflower Unified School And more importantly, why is it that if I went to one of our neighbors, I could be making anywhere between $8,000 and $12,000 more, working with a similar demographic of We claim to build futures here. It's all around us. What about my future? I'm not done yet. Sheesh. The audacity of today's youth. Anyways, please consider that with the new generation, many of us have heard of what it's like, the long hours, the low pay, the grueling circumstances, and how it's only getting worse. We're not going to sit around and take it forever. We're tired, we're poor, and we want to be fairly compensated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any other cards for tonight? Thank you. At this time, the board will recess to closed session. Open session will resume at approximately 6 o'clock. Thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Board of Education was called to order at 6:00 PM in open session, and the board then adjourned to closed session... Sorry. Sorry about four. Open at 4:00 PM in open session, and then the board adjourned to closed session at 4:21. Thank you. We will now reconvene the meeting in open session at 6:01. Topics discussed in closed session were student matters, public employee discipline dismissal release, pending litigation, anticipated litigation, labor negotiations. Replacing pages for agenda items 10.3, 1.2, and 11.4 are on the back table. Public comments, agenda, non-agenda items. Tonight, we have requests addressing agenda and non-agenda items. If we could please have Janice Parks come up to the podium, please?
Today, this is the first time ever. I've been... I'm a graduate of Mayfair High School. Some of my students are here. I also have been teaching at Mayfair High School for almost 30 years. So I graduated in '85, started in '95, and I will be retiring, hopefully, in 2025. I appreciate that there seems to be a lot more positivity. As a math teacher, to me, everything is just about the numbers. Had I worked at a different district... When I first started teaching, I just wanted to teach. I had nothing, no idea. Like, I came from a private school, and I thought, "Oh, I'm making $30,000? Okay, I'm good." But when you see that other people doing the same job as you are making more money, and then I calculate, and you're like, "Oh, I could have made $600,000 more in my lifetime. Could have paid for a house, and when I retire and want to travel, it could mean this much more." I just hope that it's more... Where you guys are... Like, it feels like before it was adversarial with the district. I think now, it's becoming a little bit less than that, and I would hope that you would want to fight for us to get what we can get, as much as we give to our students. But that's all I have. Please take into consideration how hard everybody works, and just pretend I was, you know, your mother or your daughter. I don't know. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Parks. Could we now have Councilwoman Mary Sendejas come on up to the podium, please? Oh.
Did she use the Spanish microphone?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Councilwoman Mary Sendejas for the First District in the city of Long Beach, for identification purposes only. I'm here today to speak in support of Bellflower Unified School District Board Member Dr. Sue Elhassan. I am disappointed and disapprove of the ableism that was seemingly demonstrated by this board during the reorganizational process of this board. Ableism is a term used to describe discrimination and prejudice against people with disabilities. Ableism can take many forms, including physical barriers and beliefs that view people with disabilities as an inferior or less than valuable. Ableism contributes to the marginalization of disabled people in society and the workplace. As the first Latina wheelchair user elected to office in the nation, I understand firsthand the need for reasonable accommodations in order to execute the duties of public office. I understand firsthand the need for equity in order to uplift those with disabilities. In not acknowledging or applying good faith, efforts, and not accommodating Dr. Sue Elhassan's needs, the board has not lived up to the expectation that all persons should be provided reasonable accommodations. I hope that you will pause, reflect, reevaluate, and correct this wrong by looking inwards. Dr. Sue Elhassan is the face of all students, including those with disabilities, and deserves to be treated fairly and equitably. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sendejas. Next, we have Mrs. Foote.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Garza, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Droudi, and Cabinet. My name is Marian Foote. I began in Bellflower Unified School District in 1994-95, ahead of Ms. Parks back there. Taught her everything. No. This is my 28th year as a full-time classroom teacher. I've taught at two schools, Mayfair, Lost Flores, and Mayfair 2.0, which feels like a third. I also started teaching in Santa Monica Melibu Unified School District at my alma mater. I've loved working for this school district for many years. It reminded me of the one I grew up in. It's been hard to stay in this relationship of recent. I'm willing to endure the struggle and help be part of the recovery, but not on sale at a 20% discount. I'm outraged that someone who has my experience, my expertise, and years of service is earning $20,000 more a year than me. Efforts here today will show your employees your greatness, your great appreciation for the years of dedication, not just teachers, every employee, to the children of Bellflower, Lakewood, and the Cerritos community. Let's keep the momentum going by completing negotiations with the highest raise. Do you really want your workforce here like this to continue? We need to be at home. We need to be rested. We need to be planning. I do appreciate all of your dedication and the things that you guys have planned for. I'm looking forward to it. So thank you for your dedication, and it is getting better. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Foote. Any other cards for tonight? Thank you. So, do we have any amendments to this evening's agenda?
Yes. There is one correction on agenda item 11.4, Board of Education Travel and Conference Reconciliation. Under... You'll see under Renita Armstrong's parking, the amount reads 420. It is corrected to read 180. The hotel overcharged, and the district will receive a refund for 240. So we wanted to make sure that that's a correction on the record.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda?
Yes, you have that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Elhassan?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichtfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Inspirational message. Tonight, Principal at Stephen Foster, Mr. Wetwood, will be offering the inspirational message. Please welcome Mr. Wetwood.
You guys took care of that? Okay, thank you very much. Benjamin Franklin said, "Tell me and I forget; teach me and I remember; involve me and I learn." I see BUSD in 2023 as moving together to involve our students and families to learn, achieve, and thrive on their pathway to becoming future leaders. As Confucius said, "Education breeds confidence; confidence breeds hope; hope breeds peace." So let our children be the peacemakers of the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetwood. Now, Mr. Wetwood, I believe we're going to do the flags salute as well. But don't use just yet.
I wasn't sure if I needed to go and come back, but I'll just stay right here. So if we could all rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Now, you can go ahead, sit.
So, are we going?
Yes.
All right. So we'll do the other one next.
No, we were actually going to say, Mr. Wetwood, if you could share with us about the Foster Bulletin Board.
Thank you. So, in light of where we went with the inspirational message, I wanted to take a moment to talk about what we are doing at Stephen Foster Elementary School, where we presented here, charged up for PBIS. So this is all about some of the initiatives that we have in our positive behavior intervention and supports. And it's more than just positive behavior. It's really about the culture of the school. And it's, it's more than just positive behavior. It's really about the culture of the school. So on this board, we have represented in our third-grade classes. We have some work that they've done and inspired by Universal Design for Learning and multiple means of representation. We have our bolts spelled out, and what that stands for is to be prepared, own your actions, lead with character, treat others with respect, and strive for excellence. And so at school at Steven Foster, this is what we really believe in and what we are working on as, as a team of educators with our students as we help them get involved with learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetwood, for your presentation. Student representatives, school site reports. It's time for our student board reports, please. Representing Bellflower High School, Bianca Aguilar. Welcome, Bianca.
Good evening, President Garza, Council, Superintendent, and everyone else in attendance. My name is Bianca Aguilar, and I'm here to report on everything that has happened over since the last board meeting at Bellflower High School. So some of our past events that we had, we did have Keith Hawkins over, which he was able to talk to us ASB people and was able to do our senior seminar, and it was a lot of fun. Some people cried. We all laughed, and it was a great experience for all of us. It was very, very memorable, and I'm so happy that we had it. And we got a lot of great feedback, especially about Keith. And then we also had our Buck Blast Off, where we invited our sixth graders over from all of the different elementary schools, from Woodruff to Pyle to Ramona, right here. And our theme was To Infinity and Beyond, and it was a lot of fun. We just got to introduce them to our clubs, what we do, some organizations, athletics, some stuff that they would be interested here at Bellflower. And then we also did our Fourteen Days of Valentine's, which is ongoing since we did our Day Nine today. And that picture right there is our first one with our ASB President Anthony Aguilar along with our senior choice, Adrienne Bunok. And then going on with our past events, we are doing Counselor Week this week, where we just honor our counselors for all the hard work that they are doing because they are very stressed out and very busy doing our schedules for next year. And we just want to show them appreciation and that we love them and we appreciate all of the hard work that they are doing for us. And we, of course, with February, it is Black History Month, and we do have lunchtime events where we teach the kids about, we educate them on Black history, and we also play some fun games, like we did finish the lyrics, some a little bit of karaoke and musical chairs. And then Kindness Week did pass, where we throw kindness around like confetti. We did do our dress-up days, and then we also had some lunchtime activities with some of our lean crew leaders, where we did do sticky notes and we posted it around the school, which is very cute. And some upcoming events that we are very excited to show you is, one is our Renaissance Rally, where we honor all of the students that are on our honor roll. And we give them, like, a lay. We have fun with them, and then we give out some trophies to the ones that we think that are, go above and beyond and are very deserving. And then we have our CIF games. Our soccer team, our soccer teams, excuse me, did make it to CIF, our girls and boys, and they're very excited and they're very happy. And they, actually, the boys do have a game tonight. They should be playing right now, and I hope that they're doing so well. And we also have our Singing Valentine's that's coming up, where basically our ensemble, our angels, and I think our choir as well, do go out and they sing some, to the person of your choice, a song. And they do, they range from five to twenty dollars, where five dollars, you get a song, a gram, and a rose. For ten dollars, you get a song, a gram, a rose, and a teddy bear. And for twenty dollars, you get a song, a gram, a rose, and teddy bear and chocolate. And then finally, we have our Sister Act, where that is gonna be our musical for this upcoming year, and we invite you all to join. I'll be coming out more information later. And they are, they started rehearsals and everything, and everything is looking amazing, and they are all having a lot of fun. And finally, this is where you can stay connected with us, and if you have any questions, you can come and contact us here. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Representing Mayfair High School is Lizzie Farah. Welcome, Lizzie.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Dr. Jodi and those in attendance. Thank you again for allowing me to speak behalf of Mayfair High School. I'm very grateful to be here. I would like, it is my pleasure to share some very exciting news. Mr. Diaz, our principal, did receive notification this afternoon that we did receive our sixth annual accreditation from WASC. Our visit was in November, and I just want to say congratulations to our students, staff, administration, college superintendent, everyone who helped out. It honestly was an overall collective teamwork. And speaking of recognition, I did want to recognize that it is Counselors' Week as well at Mayfair High School. And I wanted to say a big shout-out and thank you to our counselors. They honestly have so many responsibilities, but they are actively continuing to help students and provide us with resources and materials that honestly create a path of success for us, especially for seniors, since financial aid is coming up with due dates in colleges. Honestly, a huge thank you to them. They're amazing, and they still find time in their day to just ask students how they are. So amazing, counselors. We can move forward to the next slide. Because it is winter season, we have winter sports coming up. Most of them did wrap up, but like Bellflower, as we speak, our boy soccer team is playing right now, which is where our principal is, supporting our team at Irvine High School, so hopefully they are doing good as well. We have some snapshots from all sorts of winter sports. We have wrestling, soccer, girls' basketball, boys' basketball. They all did amazing and honestly had some very fun events that students actively went to. We also, because of Kindness Week, had a kindness cart, where administration provided coffee and snacks for teachers, so they spent a morning going around to all classrooms, just giving teachers a morning caffeine boost, because we all need those sometimes. We also had our Taiwan Lunar New Year celebration from our Chinese club, and they, they brought out our dragon, which is always a huge attraction to all our students. It's so fun to see the performance, and it's so creative. We love it. And in our video, we have our Unified Basketball Tournament. We hosted it at our school, and we had surrounding schools come, such as Warren, La Mirada, and Paramount. And it was one of the biggest basketball turnouts we've had in a very long time. Students were cheering on our unified athletes. And in the video, if it plays, we had one of our unified athletes, his name is Johnny. He scored a basket, and the students just went absolute crazy. It was honestly a great memory for all our monsoons. We can continue to the next slide, please. And we did have a huge event, such as, like, just like Bellflower, we did have senior seminar with Keith Hawkins, our motivational speaker. We had our leadership training with seniors who kind of led the senior seminar as well. We had, it was overall a moment of celebration where seniors can honestly reflect on what they want for the future and bond with our entire class for one final, one of, like, our very final times altogether. And we did have our traditional yearly run around the school, where our entire senior class, just collectively, during snack, all runs around the entire campus. It's kind of just a form of celebration for us, which was really fun, and we always look forward to that, which was very nice. We can move forward to the next slide as well. And our monsoon forecast, in other words, things that are coming up for Mayfair, are open house, which is otherwise, we are calling it the fair this year, because we want to exhibit and honestly give recognition to all the things that we've accomplished, which is a huge number of things, whether it be athletics, clubs, what we made in the classroom. So we're very excited for that, and we are calling it the fair. We invite you all to come. It is February twenty-third. It's gonna be a super exciting event. We'll sell food, have music, and overall just display what students have accomplished in and out of the classroom. We also have our Winter Dance coming up, which no longer is a Western theme, because at Mayfair, we actively want to listen to students and what they want to see from events on behalf of ASB. So we did listen to our students, and we changed it to Winter Formal, which students are very excited for, and we honestly have no problem adapting, because at the end of the day, we just want our students to have fun. So we're excited to create that fun for them. And in the middle, we have a list of all events coming up, and as you can see on your desk, you have your little packets, because on the top of the list is our Singing Valentine's. We all love to celebrate. It's just a time for love and spreading kindness all around. It's a sixty-year tradition here at Mayfair. We've been featured on the news. We have some amazing vocalists and, you know, just groups that can overall just share that love all around our campus. And we can send grams to the phone, like, over the phone or in person. So in the packet, there's instructions on how exactly you can send a Singing Valentine, with a little tree on top to kind of spread that Valentine's Day love. And we also have our dodgeball tournament, Winter Formal, CIF for Boys Soccer, and baseball and softball season coming up. For more information on details or specific times, events, or prices, please follow our Instagram at mayfair.asb, where we'll actively be continuing to show what we are doing at Mayfair High School. That concludes my presentation. Thank you and have a safe night, everyone.
Thank you, Lizzie. Representing Somerset High School is Emmanuel Moore, who is substituting for Aiden Carstens. Welcome.
Good evening, President Garza, members of the board, members of the cabinet, and all guests in the audience. My name is Emmanuel Moore, and I am a senior at Somerset. Vision Night, or Open House, was held last month, and the turnout was awesome. In these pictures, you see the smiling faces of parents with their students expressing satisfaction with our academic programs and the materials we are learning. In fact, you see me with my mom, my dad, and my two sisters in the bottom left, or bottom right, I mean, sorry. So I use this opportunity to share them my presentation on artificial intelligence. And on the next slide, Principal Higgins addresses our guests at the opening of Vision Night. Mr. Higgins also had the privilege of escorting board members, Ms. Amy Stewart, around various classrooms to meet our teachers and receive a brief overview of our academic programs. There, you also have two representatives from Community Family Guidance and Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Olivia, who was observing two Calab students operating their drones. It was awesome to see as well. And not pictured, but also there were attendants at Vision Night, was student board member Christopher Mendoza and Assistant Superintendent Bonnie Carter. Next slide, please. Somerset Teacher and ASB Advisor Brian Armada signed up his students for a leadership event at Universal Studios. The event was last month, January twenty-seventh, and our ASB students joined other students throughout Southern California to learn leadership techniques and utilize at school, all in their settings. On the next slide, we see Mr. Armada, our SEL counselor, Ms. Shannon Woods, who also helped chaperone the trip, and in the background, students Regina Lopez, Minnie Ruiz Martinez, Brian Gonzalez, and ASB member, ASB President Nathan Corales. I didn't get to go. During the leadership event, students engaged in an icebreaker activity, and they had the opportunity to have the group picture at Somerset's ASB taken at the entrance of Universal Studios. Next slide, please. For our upcoming events, tomorrow is our Second Annual Super Friday. The event includes an on-campus tailgate and barbecue, games, and other fun activities. Also, students and staff are encouraged to wear their favorite team jersey. Mine will be Rams. Then, on Thursday, March ninth, twenty-twenty-three, Somerset will host its Annual College and Career Fair. This is a huge event where students are afforded the opportunities to speak one-on-one with representatives from our local community colleges and career professionals from a range of industries and professionals such as law enforcement, firefighters, and military. Sorry, there's more. Environment, construction, industrial technology, and social and human services. This concludes our board report for tonight. Thank you for listening and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moore. Thank you, each of you. Your reports were very well done and for making sure that we are always connected to you and seeing what's going on in our schools. At this time, I welcome you to remain for the balance of our meeting, but I also recognize that you might have some other academic obligations that you need to attend, so you are free to leave at this time. Thank you so much. We do not have recognitions tonight. It's time for presentations. Dr. Jodi?
Yes, we have three presentations tonight, and so the first is more, I'm gonna talk about just the theory of action that I've, I've talked to you all about, but I wanted to revisit that whole concept, because it ties into some of the, some of the Agenda items tonight for approval, with some contracts that I need to, but I needed to explain why those contracts. So this would allow me the chance to do that. And I'm also glad the staff is here too, so they can also start hearing from me about some of this, so that, because they'll hear more from me, but this is a great opportunity to put them to hear that as well. The other piece we're gonna talk about is Bylaws six-zero-zero-five. And then lastly, we have a presentation from Mrs. Azafido that will talk about career technical education in the district. With that, I just want to talk about the approach that I will take us through, hope to take us through, and that I hope that all of us buy into, because, because I think it's gonna take all of us to really make this place special. I fully, I fully, I fully believe that. And I titled this extraordinary achievement for all students through intentional focus on addressing the engagement gap. And I put that there, because oftentimes, we focus on achievement gap and things like that, and those are obviously important, but my, my belief is a lot of the issues in the achievement gap has to do with lack of engagement or lack thereof. And, and that could, that could be, curriculum could be adjusted to increase engagement. And, and if we focus on that, and we actually keep the rigor high, I think you, the achievement will naturally occur. So you'll hear a lot from me from this point on, just about how are students engaged? Are there, is there a lack of engagement? And so on. So more to come on that. Let me first start off with this slide I use everywhere I go. It speaks to the importance of who we are as educators, and I am very, very proud to be an educator, and I'm sure you are as well. I heard from you tonight. But we do have an important work to do. And there was a gentleman by the name of Michael Fulon that I follow much. He's a mentor of mine. He talks about transforming education as one of the signature challenges of our, of our times. And he, there, he talks about the complicated world that our children are about to inherit, that we are currently living in. And there, and there's a lot of research that suggests that if there isn't some kind of self-correction where we're headed, it could be catastrophic. But we dealing with climate change, the economic divide between the haves and have-nots. I think the gentleman said earlier, I was, you know, when I'm visiting sites, I'm talking about just the challenges between the different generations, the competing interests versus the common interest, that we all want to buy homes, but, but, but in order for buying home here, our Gen Z, Gen Y can't do it, just because the natural state of things right now in the United States. And the generations all have to do with that. You know, for example, if you're gonna, if you're Gen Y, you want to buy a home and, and next to a baby boomer, that, you're gonna pay a lot more taxes to that baby boomer that owns that home. Is that baby boomer gonna change his mind? Heck, no. But do you, do you, as a person that's buying property, wants to pay lower taxes? You do. There goes, there's a conflict. That leads us to trouble. So there's all kinds of stuff that we're dealing with, and these, what you see up there are just examples of some of the challenges our, our children are about to face. To me, what, this is really about who can help fix this. Okay? Who could, who can help address the challenges that our children are about to face that we're facing right now? The only agency I can see that can correct that is education. Okay? And it is under attack right now. It is under attack. I don't know if you're watching it, but there's a bunch of people out there, you know, I happen to come from Santa Monica, Malibu, and I just know all these companies are coming in with their own ideas of how to educate the students outside of the public education system, because they're saying that Google, we can do a better job than the school system. Snapchat, we can do a better job. You know? Because they're saying that Google, we can do a better job than the school system. Snapchat, we can do a better job. You know it, no? With the introduction of A I we heard today, it's just gonna make things more complicated. So I use this to try to inspire us to continue to demonstrate who we are. Because there's nothing others all these other people or anybody else can do to correct this thing but us. But we have to understand what's coming our way and then we just can't be like Blockbuster, right? Remember remember them? They were there one night and say, oh, we'll just do CDs and tapes and not understanding what was coming down with technology and streaming and they were gone overnight. Right? So we're we can be the same way if we're not careful. So I use this as a as a way to say we are special. The world needs us and we need we need to embrace that and understand that and 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 work together. So how so so essentially, we gotta bring the while we teaching the academic skills and everything else that we wanna try to get our kids students to be able to be successful with, we need to bring the world to them to unpack and understand so that we they can develop thought, creative ways of solving it, and I think we can facilitate that for them. Okay, and when we do that and we bring the world to students, yeah, and then a lot of things happen. It increases their self and others' expectations for more learning and achievement by providing a process for this. And if you if you approach things in a project-based learning way. And when you approach things, if you bring the world to the students, it increases student engagement and learning through personalization and ownership. When you bring the world to the students, it connects students to the real world, which is often more reflective of their realities that they live with. Particularly for students that are in a diverse backgrounds that often do not see the curriculum representing them. But if you bring the world to them, they have no choice but to engage in that. There's all kinds of it builds skills, knowledge, self-confidence, self-efficacy through inquiry. And then I'm not gonna read through all those things, but deepens human desire to connect with others others. We have the ability to bring this form of learning to our students. Okay, we we have we have full control over that as as an education institution, and I think we have to, just based on everything I just got through saying. So my theory of action is a it's a three-pronged approach. And here, we talk about establishing a culture of shared accountability through a systems approach. And then we also, I believe, we need to teach teach cross-cultural and socially emotional skills. And then lastly, we always have to engage in constant reflection around issues of equity. Tonight, I'm not gonna speak to the bottom two circles there. I'm gonna speak to what's in red there, which is to establish a shared a shared culture of accountability. And I think and 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 there's a process for that to get there, and I'm gonna demonstrate what that looks like. This is an important slide I like to often use because it speaks to how we must operate as a system. Okay, there isn't a single person that has the answers. There isn't. I don't, you don't. Board members sitting up here don't by themselves, but collectively, we do. Okay, collectively, we do. And this is talking about, this slide here talks about, and this is from John Hattie, is a researcher and does that a lot of work? And he talks about that the the greatest influence on student achievement and progression and learning is having highly highly expert, inspired, and passionate teachers and school leaders working together to maximize the effect of their teaching on all students and their care. Okay, it says working together. Okay, there is a role for the school leaders to harness the expertise in the schools and lead successful transformations. And there's also a role for the system to provide a support time and resources for this to happen. You put all this together, working in concert is the is the key, but that is not that easy. Okay, it is not that easy to get people to commit to common expectations and so on. And I know some people say, well, we already do this. A question I always ask people is, do we all have common grading practices? That we utilize. If we don't, then we're not working together. Okay, why is that important? Why is having common grade? Because that that speaks to the expectations each of us has for the kids in our classes. The three of us here are English teachers. And the way I grade my persuasive essays are different from from my my peers here. There's twenty, twenty-five, thirty students in my class are gonna have different expectations by the time they leave my class versus theirs. And the hardest part is our kids are about to go on to another grade level with the other teachers expecting that everybody's coming in with the same knowledge, right? But if we didn't have that conversation to have clarity around the learning expectations and have a grading practice the same way and all that, there is no way that's gonna happen. And the only way that's gonna occur is we we actually find time to sit down and communicate in a regular basis. That's the only way that's gonna work. Yeah, and then if we all got twenty-five to thirty kids in our classes, that's ninety kids that we're impacting. Okay, so there's just a lot to talk about regarding this, but but I also know it is not that easy getting teachers together and saying, let's have a common grading practices. Trust me, I've been I've been there, I know it. A simple thing is having clarity around, just asking a question, as at Washington, at Mayfair, do we have are we clear regarding what we expect our students to be able to do by the time they leave Mayfair High? I mean, if I was to go to all hundred and eight teachers there, could they deter can then demonstrate what it is that we that we expect the students to be able to do before they graduate? And if everybody says yes and we're actually doing it, that's great, we're arrived in. But chances are that's not the case in most spaces, and if they are here, that's great, we'll we'll investigate that. But the but the key of that whole thing is, the only way you're gonna get there is you have to meet and talk and have conversations and have clarity around what you're gonna do. So you have to have a practice for that. So anyway, this is an important slide here, and it speaks to a huge part of my my theory of action as we as we work together collectively to harness a harness the expertise of everyone to 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 address what we know is important, which is to deliver education to our kids that are gonna make the world better. What I'm talking about is operating not in silos and different directions, but how do we get us moving in the same direction? Okay, how do we how do we get here from here? Okay, and we have full control over this. Full control. It's just a it's the attitude we have as we come together to ask the questions and get get clear on the expectations and and then making sure that we 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 don't when we don't get it our way, that we don't take our marbles and go home. That's what I meant by that. You don't get your way, that does not mean you take your marbles and go home. You 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 understand that there's disagreements and you and and we become we are emotionally intelligent and 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 then we and we commit to the greater good and we move forward on that. So so but like I said, this is fully within our control. So how do we get there, though? How do we how do we communicate? At Mayfair, there's a hundred and eight teachers, I'm guessing, I think there's a hundred and eight. Bellflower High, there's X amount of teachers, Washington. We have all these different teachers. How do we get us to get on the same page? And and that means we gotta be organized. We've gotta be organized. Okay? This graph here is something you'll be hear a lot from me in terms of how we should organize ourselves in order to get there. We have students, we have teachers. And then the teachers are teach different grade levels. We have and teach different subjects. The key of there is how do we get them in communication? If I was a chemistry teacher or English teacher, how do we how do we ensure that our expectations are the same with the persuasive essay? That means there has to be a time where we communicate and actually talk and calibrate our our grading and and our work. That means we need to be organized into teams. So I'm gonna be asking us to be in teams. If you are in a if you're in a science department, you should be in one of the four teams, right? Earth science, biology, chemistry, physics, and then there's a bunch of other science folks that that you you fit in one of those rooms. But if you're in English, you're in English nine, ten, eleven, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. If you're in a you in those groups, if you're in an elementary school, you're in a certain grade level, but they're you're organizing to teams. Okay, and then there's a conversation that occurs with those teams in a coherent way. But how do you do that? If you have a hundred and eight people, how does a principal engage in a conversation with everybody? The key of that is, are there some teacher leaders in those teams that can come up with through whatever selection to be the facilitator of those meetings and engage in constant conversation around school issues? And they form what we call the site leadership team, where you have your principals, your administrators, the paraprofessionals, the leaders, and then teacher leaders engaging in expectations and conversations where they can go back and forth between the teams and the site leadership team and really engage in that conversation. So that is where the magic occurs into getting commitments from a school. So what I mean what I mean by commitment? If Mayfair decides to say our persuasive essays should look this way, and this is a rubric, and you all agree to it. Okay, you all agree to it. That's what I meant by having that commitment to say, okay, and that's established at those teams, right? You could even you could even go out there as a team and say, okay, are we gonna have a right? Is it only the English department's issue? Do you teach persuasive essay? Is there math involved too, or is it social science involved? Is Wilson involved? Okay, well, well, if it is, then are we all grading with the same rubric or not? That's a conversation that has to that has to exist. And 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 the way you do that is through that site leadership team and they go back and forth with the with the because to have a hundred and eight people having that conversation in a room, that's that makes it difficult. So you you gotta you gotta kind of be organized in that way. The principals are essential here in that they are the ones facilitating these conversations and making sure that they're keeping the peace, because when you get people together, they get very passionate. And and they have to facilitate those conversations to get those commitments. And then and then the district then sees what the sites have and they support. Okay, and they support. So so this is the communication structure I was talking about here. And 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 I'm gonna dive deeper. How do you what do you do when you're in this situation? How do you get to those commitments? Because with this, I'm saying that each school is essentially going to at some point given a framework from a district about what we expect students to do, each school is gonna develop their game plan that supports the district vision, and then the district then supports the school. But we need the school to come to a bunch of commitments that make sense so we can move forward. Okay? So I'm gonna I'm gonna go to another slide here that's connected to this. As I talked about earlier, the the school leadership team creates implements they're the ones that establish the clarity of focus at the site level, expected outcomes for the site actions and supports. The goal is for that team of the school to establish those things through a process that they then commit to. What I mean by commitment is having consensus. All right, and then holding each other accountable for fulfilling their part of the of the agreement. Okay, something something is this is this is that impossible thing to do? No, it's not. It just means the attitude shift is saying I want to be a part of the problem. Anyway, I want to engage, I wanna be a part of the problem. And if I don't get my my way because my my rubric didn't make the cut my own personal rubric of the essay didn't make the cut, that doesn't mean I take my marbles home and go home. It means you you agree with the the consensus of the group and you follow through on it. I think we need to have weekly checking on what we're doing on a weekly basis and in a monthly basis, how we how students are doing. Do we have the ability to pause at any time to ask the question how our students are doing? We certainly do. We just gotta be organized enough to be able to ask that question and then and then and then and then do that. That means we all gotta be committed to what that looks like and establishing that. And then lastly, review quarterly progress, how how students are doing. And so if you these things are in place, that's when you really push the collective wisdom of everybody. Because in there, you're gonna engage in some deep conversations about why students are learning, not learning. We we recognize these teachers are having success, this one isn't, so how do we what do they do differently? There's just a bunch of things that's gonna happen as you problem solve together. And 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 that's what I mean by getting the collective wisdom of everybody in that in that room to 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 problem solve. What I so what do you mean by quarterly review of things? So there there is a way, okay? And I put this here just to demonstrate that we have the ability to look at data in a quarterly basis for us to make adjustments. What we and when you look up there, it's like quarter one, for example, I call lag metrics. I use that term and you'll get the chance to hear that a lot. This is what I call the autopsy data. Okay, autopsy. Fourth graders just graduated, matriculated, and they're going to fifth grade. In August, we get their results for fourth grade. We can't do anything. They're in fifth grade now. They're 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 gone. That's autopsy. Okay? It's a dead you term it's a dead body, but we can learn from it, but we can't do anything for the body now, right? So it's a it's a lag data, all right? How many students got suspended last year? Why? How many students got a referral for expulsion? How many drugs issue situations? How many you name it, we can establish some metrics ourselves and and look at how our students did the previous year. Okay, and I'm proposing in August, we all pause and ask that question and have that conversation as we lost the year. And then we make a plan to re pause in November, when we get our assessments in place and all that, to check to see if we're making progress based on what we said we would do. Okay? You stop there and pause and ask questions. Hey, are our students learning? Damn, we've seen the same trend. Our seem like our Latino students are this or or this specialized students are that or whatever. We decided to say, man, it seems like we're not making progress. Let's pause and ask questions. What what's stopping that? Is it our practices between Aug- August and November? What can we what can we adjust along the way? And if there's adjustment, maybe you do it. And then you go to quarter three in March, you ask the same question. And then in the meantime, you're while you're asking all these questions, you're developing your game plan for the following year. And then and then all of a sudden, after having after some deep conversations as a system, you come up with a whole new plan to say, we either continue what we're doing because we're making good progress or or we make some adjustments along the way and you start a whole cycle over so you can engage in that conversation. So so it's it looks complex because you're talking with so many different people, but if you're organized, if you're organized, it can get done. Okay, it can get done. We is within our control. So I'm gonna take you guys through something a a a concept here where in the hopes that you are you are gonna engage in. Well, how do we get to common commitments? How do we strategically walk through a process with that many people to get to common commitments? The way I'm saying is you you contain this process within a school, right? You contain the process within your school because that's how you manage it. Washington is gonna have a go through a process. Lindstrom is gonna go through a process. And Mayfair is gonna go through a process. Bellflower is, Somerset is, they're gonna go through a process. A concept here is the board and the district are going to have deep conversations and look at data. We're gonna look at things and we're gonna establish a vision for the district and then some data outcomes that we expect to see as a district as a district whole. Okay, that's everybody in the average. We have that clarity, and then we have expected outcomes we wanna see along the way. In that process, then we go to each site and say, look, it's fine, we can tell you what to do, when to do it and all that, but we don't we don't think that's the best idea. We think in order for us to get your full buy-in, we need to give the power to the site to make the local decisions about and 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 within the defined process that is, man, it can't be everything, but it's gotta be defined and headed to the right direction we're trying to go. So the concept here is the teacher, the principal sits with their site leadership teams, which is our which is our teachers. And if it's a big school, obviously, you can't sit with a hundred and eight teachers. I mean, you gotta have that communication thing, but you have the site leadership team. You go through and you ask the questions as a whole group, what skill and behavior do we want to see students demonstrating? Okay, first first you identify the success indicators you wanna try to do. Okay, we want our students to behave a certain way. We we don't want suspension rates. We don't want, you know, you you go through that whole thing together and then you ask that question. And notice, this is not being developed by the district, it's not being developed by anybody else, but the teacher leaders and the principal administration. And you answer those questions. And if everybody agrees to that, okay, if this is what we want, correct? Yes, okay. What instructional practice will best support development of those skills? You go through a process and engage in a conversation and you identify, okay, we need thinking maps, we need this, we need that. Find out where it is, you know, just you go through the whole, you use a collective wisdom on the whole approach. And then you outline this and you get a commitment to say, oh, we all are in agreement on this. Yes, yes, we are. Okay. I didn't get my way, but okay, but don't take your marbles and go home. Okay, you still gotta, we still need you. I didn't get my way, but, okay, but don't take your marbles and go home, okay? You still gotta, we still need you, okay? Your kids need you. And then, from there, we ask the questions, okay, what kind of supports do you need to get that done, alright? In here, because you're gonna identify, supports could be, well, we don't know how to use thinking maps, we don't know how to do that, we need professional learning around that, we need. X, we need, we need to know how to, um, uh, 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 solve for this, or you know, just whatever it is that you, that you're gonna demonstrate. Uh, in terms of tier one supports, and then tier two and tier three, you actually outline those things. And in that process, guess what you're doing? You're developing your professional learning plan for the school. How are you gonna coordinate when students are successful or not successful? You're actually gonna establish commitments together. To, to do that. And then in there's gonna be monetary things, right? How you, uh, how you use your resources, how you use your bell schedule. How you use your after-school supports, how do you use, you're gonna list all of that, and then you're gonna agree together to say, okay. Uh, this is the process we're gonna do, and then you outline those things, you get a commitment to it, and then, and you move on. And then you also establish along the way, what evidence, if we're gonna make progress, what evidence are we gonna see? That tell us that the progress is gonna be there, and you actually outline that yourself, and then you put all this in a timeline in that school year. Once you do that, principal comes to district office, myself, and everybody else, hey. Jim Watt would have been, uh, Mr. Watt would have said, Dr. Roddy, what do you think, man? This is where my staff is at, and I think we, okay, this is good, okay? I like this, okay, yeah, here you go. Go about your business, okay? We'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks and whenever, we'll go celebrate you, and then you go to work. That, that, here, what you're gonna get is the sites possibly having different professional learning plans. Different things, but all this has to be within a confines, but we're gonna be responsive to what the site is saying they need. The thing I'm gonna ask is, in all of this is commitment, commitment, commitment to the things that you said you need. The things that you said you need. Okay? It does not mean that the district office isn't involved, we're actually involved, we're closer to you in supporting you. And the way I, the way I look at it is, you're going to work hard and try to fulfill this. And then you're gonna run into frustrations as a school, as a principal, as a staff, on some issue, I don't know, um, somebody didn't order papers or something, I don't know, you know? Dr. Roddy, I'm pissed off, yeah, this isn't working, I'm pissed off. I said a lot, huh, without a mic, okay? So this is how we get here, okay? The whole goal is to get to a place where we're all hop, operating together with this. Uh, and then when you look at lag metrics and all that kind of stuff, you are gonna look at your data, but, but, um. Your schools may have different approaches of how they gather the data, but how powerful is that, where we'll see a school just all of a sudden do something, and then. Another school, and you're like, oh god, what did you guys do? Uh, what did you guys do to improve like this, based on the same metrics we're looking at, and? Well, our approach is, okay, okay, maybe that's something we should look into then, no. So you, you just, you just continue to have that conversation, and then, and then you get there. So, the key of this is really about the buy-in, and the stuff, I, I get it, there's frustration out there right now, I'm hoping to, uh, uh, address some of that. My hope is to always try to make sure that people feel valued here, because we do value everybody. And, uh, and obviously, uh, that comes with, uh, monetary supports and things like that. Uh, but at the end of the day, we're all here to, to solve this. And then, if we actually get the system in place, we can now start introducing, I will guarantee you, there will be instances where. You're gonna be, you know, you're like, my god, November, December, our, these particular students are just continuing to struggle, what's stopping this from? And guess what you're gonna do? You're gonna keep asking deeper questions. If it's a certain trend you see in a certain, uh, gender of students, or. Classification of students, or race of students, something like that, you're gonna ask that question. Why are these particular students not being successful? And let's dig deeper instead of just ignoring it and, and possibly ever think about it as a, as a lag metrics. We don't want that. We wanna lead as a lead metrics and say, are there adjustments we need to make throughout the year for that to occur? And that's what we need to get to, and, and, and then in there, I think, when you run into that frustration, that's when the concept of. Man, uh, somebody, I remember we did this process at the school I was at, and, now, I remember, now, uh, this is no knock on Romeo and Juliet, right? But it's a great book, I love it, because I understood it, but I had a good teacher that explained the drama behind it, but I remember. Uh, at Clovis West, when we go through a process like this, uh, we were stuck, and a lot of my African-American students were struggling, and we paused and said, what is happening? I pulled them in together, and we talked to them, what, I, I see this trend here, we're trying to, Dr. Roddy, man, now this stuff, what's all this Alvea stuff, man? Why are you teaching this stuff, you know? I said, well, uh, well, they're trying to teach this, well, they, what, what, why they gotta use this book? Use another book, you know? So I went to the teachers, I said, this is what the students are thinking about the curriculum. Maybe we need to, we need to increase, they wanna learn. But the stuff we put in front of them is disconnected, and it's not, they don't see the connection, they don't see the sense behind it. If we're actually trying to do X, why don't we use this other curriculum that's more aligned to what they're, what, what, what they understand, the context that they, they understand, and then, and then we go there. So, you'll find nuggets like that along the way that'll help us shift the system. So, anyway, uh, I'm talking a lot here. I think, uh, I think this place can be special. I think, I think, um, I, I, I want to, I want to demonstrate that this place is, can be one of the best districts in, 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 in the county, possibly in the state. I think you have good bones here. I think you have universities around you, you have, you have the, um, the, the, the passionate people, as I've seen. You, you have a lot of local universities, you have industry, we're in LA, okay? We can always call Snapchat or other agencies out here to help, uh, uh, help, uh, bring the world to our students. So there's a lot of things we can do together, none of that will work if we don't work together in a structured way. Because it would just be piecemealed, and it would be the arrows going in different directions. And, uh, with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here. The reason why I brought this up is, is the facilitation of this conversation is, is not easy. Uh, there's a lot of culture building, trust building that needs to be done, and, and it has to be a methodical process. And, and I have facilitators of people that, that have done this for me at all the places I've gone to. And, and, and I think, and, and I have two contracts that'll help us, uh, uh, with this, and that's why I wanted to talk about this before I just blindly give you a contract. Uh, but Innovate Ed helps with this. The other group, uh, contract, uh, with, uh, Jonathan Mooney is more of. Or, I, I told the community that, uh, I wanted to, um. Uh, go on a listening tour and listen to everybody, and then eventually deposit some ideas while I'm out there talking to people. For, enough for me to be able to formulate a game plan moving forward about, uh, where we should head, where we should head. And I think in there, I'll ask questions like, okay, do, uh, do we want our students to have an internship before they graduate? Is that something of interest to ours? Do we want dual immersion, how, how do we want a dual immersion program to exist as a program, or as a start school? What, uh, you, you name it, and, but on top of that, what is working, what is not working? And, and really getting, gather all of that, uh, and then for me to then come in May, tell the board, board, I think this is where I wanna go with things. While in the meantime, the other group working with our staff to get them organized in a way where all the tool eventually merge. And then we just go about our business from there. So, um, with that, I'll stop here and see if there's any questions, or if you need to provide any clarifications.
I just had a comment. I just wanna thank you for all the collaboration, because I do think that's the key to the success of any organization, so. I love what you're doing as far as collaborating and talking with our employees, our students, our families, so I appreciate that.
I have a quick question about your timeline in the model. So what do you, are you talking about the timeline from principals to identify specific performances and how they're gonna achieve that? Okay.
This activity is occurring already on positive, you know, because everybody always has a plan to move on forward. What I'm saying is, I wanna get to a place where we have, we really make sure that the, the collective wisdom, everybody's the one developing this. Because that's how we go and get that full commitment, uh, uh, from staff, and, and what I don't want is something like this being filled out. Not that my principals are doing this, I just, like I said, I, we're, we're looking deeper. But this can be written up in some closet somewhere, and the staff never even know what, what we're doing. And that's not what we're looking for here, we're looking for, not, it's not, it's not even about this paper, it's about the, 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 the work that's gonna be taking place. But we just need a document to help guide us as we ask these questions and get through commitments.
So the timeline also stands for accountability?
Say it again now?
The timeline will also stand for accountability, because you mentioned that here in the shared accountability.
Yeah, yeah, so the time, the timeline, uh, yes, so the, the way, uh, uh, if you're talking about the time, timeframe here. Is, is, you know, for example, if, um, I wanna, we're gonna ask the question about, when do you wanna look at? When should we pause and look at the metrics? When should we pause and look at that, and no? So you're gonna, you're actually gonna scaffold your year. Uh, when you're gonna pause and ask questions and so on, so, um, uh, so, but that, that has to be demonstrating the time, uh, timeline here. I think that's, I think that's what you're asking, right?
Well, if you're looking at measuring performance and you're developing a timeline, the timeline's going to be. A benchmark for achievement of the goals.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, so, when you're talking about accountability, if something's not going right, like you're giving an example. Where in the timeline do we need to look at extending, revising, or eliminating something? That's what I was thinking.
Okay, got it, got it.
Is that what you mean by that?
Got it, got it, got it. The way I would do it, I would approach it this way, and I think this is a, we, we have to understand that we are a learning organization. And that learning is dynamic, it's not, it's not always fixed. And the timeline, uh, uh, to make adjustments are, are gonna be what we create around here. To be able to say, okay, um, in Au- August, September, what adjustments do we need to make based on what we have data we collected? And then in November, you would have done some work, you would have made some commitments and say, we're doing this, we, our Mayfair is doing this. And we believe we do this, this is what the results of students are gonna be. What is it that, um, what is it that, uh, we're gonna look at in November? That are gonna suggest that we're making progress? And then, from there, if there isn't anything going, that's where the adjustments would take place. And then, uh, uh, along the way here, and then, more importantly, uh, for, uh, uh, if some key things are established throughout that. That we need to implement going forward, we're gonna make sure that's a part of the whole LCAP process and the school site plan, and then the plan for the full year, and then. So it's, it's just a progressive growth mindset type of work that we're gonna try to do. And then, um, and, and then, to, to tell me where, if you tell me, okay, when are, are we gonna close the. Engagement gap or achievement gap with special education, I won't be able to give you that, uh, 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 right now, I think. It's, it's more or less about how can we kept, ensure that the growth of the students is making the mark? And then get to a place that we are predictive, okay? We have the ability to be predictive of how students are doing, right? We, we can do that. If we can make predictions, uh, around this time, then we, we, we can at least say, okay, we need to. Either put the pedal on the metal, or slow down, or, or, or whatever.
So, so in between the, the, you, you say like quarter one and quarter two, like between September and November. That's gonna be the time when the school sites are going to possibly be meeting, like, uh. I used to, I, we used to call them PLCs, professional learning communities.
Yeah.
Uh, whether that's weekly, and just to make sure that the team is on track.
Yeah.
And then quarter two comes, you do some more data.
Yeah.
You extract.
Yeah.
Average good, below average, you either make adjustments, or you continue.
Yeah.
On that same path, go to quarter three, this, uh, between November and March, same thing.
Yeah.
Continue developing those relationships and those professional learning communities, it's gonna take a long time to get used to that. Um, and then, um, getting up to quarter four, between March and, and May, where we do the, the LCAP.
Yeah.
Create new goals and start the process over again.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, okay.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I don't want anybody to think, illusion that this is easy to get here.
No, it's not.
So, it's not gonna be easy, it, it's gonna take time. We have to build relationships, we have to establish teams. I'm not even sure if we're all organizing PLCs right now or not, I don't, you know, uh, I don't know if, I, I don't know if the site leadership teams are. And me, and I, we have to investigate all of that, and then start to work. And then, I mean, there might be some people out there saying, I'm pissed off the district, and I'm gonna take my marbles and go out, we have to bring those people back. To say, don't take your marbles home, we need you, you know?
Yeah. Alright, well, I'm, I'm excited about it, um, and, uh, we want change, and for the better, and I'm ready for it. Alright.
Hoping, this is an intimidating thing, um, this, this should be fun. Uh, the places I've been to. Um, when you have a galvanized group working together, it just gives you energy, it gives you, uh, uh, calls to celebrate. And then it's just, it's, it's, it's a good thing, the, the biggest thing is really committing to each other, and then, and then committing to the students, is, is what we're looking for.
I, anybody else have questions? I do have a couple of questions. Um, so, along these stops, around, uh, the QL one, two, three, and four. Yes, thank you. Um, are these aligned by any chance with progress reports, achievement reports? Like, when exactly would those fall into this cycle?
Yeah, this is usually, uh, I, I've done this, the places I've been to, uh, mainly because there's about a sixty to ninety day. Uh, break between the lead metric days and all that. Usually that's what, that was the cycle that we have with our benchmarks that we looked at. We can certainly align it to some of the progress reports and all that, too, you know, uh, we can certainly do that, too. So this is just from my places I've been to, and, and, and I've gotta understand the cadence of how we, how we do things here. But whatever date it is, we wanna, we want that cycle to happen.
Yeah, I'm just thinking as a teacher, um, I wanna work smarter, not harder. And if I'm already going to be making those assessments, and we've decided on common assessments for my grade level and at my site.
Yeah.
Will this align so that it makes me, you know, it just gives me that data already?
Perfect, perfect. So, so this process is gonna start this spring with the principals, uh, talking to them, uh, about all of this. Um, uh, eventually, having them select their leadership teams, and then, and then meeting with, uh, Chris Teinhouser and some of his team to come in and. And, and, and talk to the principals and the teams to kinda assess where they are. Uh, 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 and, uh, and I think we, we have to remember, we just gotta take people from, it's something called learning by doing, right? Sometimes you can, you can just, you're just trying to plan, 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 make sure things are perfect before you act. You just gotta start the process of going, and then you evolve from there, is, is how I'm seeing this happen. Things are in motion right now. The common assessments are occurring, teachers doing their assessments and all that. Uh, uh, and some people believe in certain assessments, some of this don't. That coming together, it has to occur when we're, when we are, um, engaging in this conversation. When, when we engage in this conversation, uh, that's being facilitated by somebody in, in, in the school sites. So the process we're gonna use is the, really to get the principal to, to have, feel supported and feel comfortable to engage in these conversations. Uh, but with somebody facilitating, you know, kinda like I had with, uh, Chris Teinhouser came here. You'll notice, essentially, I was the principal, you guys were the teachers, and I was, you know, sitting there, and he was facilitating conversations, and we came up with common agreements. On certain things, it is, it looks similar, but we did it for the board work, and this is gonna be for the, uh, for the sites.
Uh, another question I had was, um, as schools, I love the, the plan with schools having individualized common assessments that they've decided on. But also, I'm looking ahead as a district, how do we then?
Oh, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
So that the board gets that information on, um, and is able to kind of measure how our schools are doing, and we keep a pulse on them.
Oh, got it, got it, okay, okay, so, uh, now I get where you're going now. So, um. We wanna give, we always wanna give the sites the ability to make decisions about the common assessments they have and all that. I think the biggest thing for the district with it is what we call benchmarks. The benchmarks are gonna be just a check-in along the way. I believe you guys have the NWEA is a pretty good, uh, uh, piece here. And, and Santa Monica Malibu, we use Star Reading in math, and we just, and I believe the NWEA and, and Star Reading and math were similar, but. We got to a point where we are very predictive within ninety-five percent accuracy. Of where students are gonna land when they took the CASP test. So, for example, at last, the last year. Uh, with the Star reading that, uh, uh, reading and math that the students took in May, uh, right before they took the, the state assessments. When we took that assessment, when we came back and looked at the lag data. like I said, we were within 95% accuracy. So, and then, and we broke the data to the progress of the students is very clear there. So that tells me that throughout the year, those STAR assessments, because we had it in, we had it in, as a, we had it as a, what do I call it? A screener. And then we took another one and another one. And this is the third one right before the state assessment. And this is the one that showed us the progress. But along the way, we saw progress. And then in there, remember, when you see that, the student, the teacher's adjustment is not the STAR test. The teacher's adjustment is their lesson plans and their own common assessors they have within. Because that piece, I'm not going to share with you, that's the sites business. But at the end of the day, they are all going to come up to the same results of what we're trying to address there. Now, now, Santa Monica Mallaboo did something different there in the sense that they liked their writing assessment, but it took about two years to get to common writing. And then eventually they're going to, they want to insert a common writing assessment that they all, the whole district uses with teachers' grades and all that. But that's a whole process that you would have to, I loved it. It takes time, but it's a great learning opportunity if we're able to have common writing and then have established a rubric that we all use. But it is a process though. It's not, you know, that's not a, you know, it takes time, so. But so, yeah, there will be a district-wide benchmarks and then site-based ones. Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Dready. Any other questions, concerns?
And I just want to make sure, some people are going to think, oh my God, you're about testing and all that. No, this is, we know that these assessments are not the end and be all, okay? I love, when we get to a place where we're executing our project-based learning concepts and we have student exhibitions and portfolios and all those things, we're going to get there. It doesn't mean that we don't have these benchmarks still. We still have to have them there, knowing that they're just a small piece, they're a small piece of the overall. So, but that's, it's going to take time for us to develop those metrics. And if we are four or five, five years from now, I imagine, I would love to see student exhibition work and things like that. But I think we have to take the time to get there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we're good. Thank you. The next item we have, the next item we have is bylaw, hold on one second here. Bylaw six zero zero five. And I believe you all have a copy of the bylaw and.
Is it nine zero zero five or six?
Nine zero zero five, sorry. Nine zero zero. I put six here, okay. Nine zero zero five. So this is a bylaw that you guys have seen already. I know, I know, on an individual basis, I told you to look at it. This is what we consider a first reading, a first reading of it. And so this is just more or less you guys agreeing, having consensus, not a vote, but a consensus to say, yes, Ben, this is, this is, we're good with this, not good with this, making adjustments. Once we agree on it, then I'll bring it, I'll bring it for, under consent, next board meeting for approval. But today will be the first reading and if there's more work to be done, it's up to you. We can bring back for more discusses next time around, but this is just the first reading. So with that, I'll let you guys take turns and deliberate and give an opinion where your thoughts are on the bylaws.
Any comments, questions, concerns? I personally liked how you cleaned up some of the language. It was a little bit confusing in some areas, so thank you for doing that.
I think this started a little while ago. What was the original concern with the bylaw to begin with? What were we cleaning up?
I think that was the interest of some board members that actually wanted to me to bring this. I think it's more or less, you know, any, you guys went through some hard, hard. The whole country went through a hard last two years of elections and things like that. So I know a lot of school districts are now really wanting to make sure that the conduct of boards, the community and all that is streamlined and is civil, I guess, as best as possible. The best way to do that is to have bylaws that guide us in our processes. So CSBA actually, because of all this, made some recommendations that we need to include for this. And that's, so what you see, that's new there, what CSB has recommended. So we just, instead of just kind of making things up, we just figured every district in the state of California is probably dealing with the same thing and that's why CSBA came up with some adjustments.
Okay, I mean, it all seems very straightforward to me. I mean, is the rest of the board comfortable with it?
I think, yeah, so we went over this a long time ago and then it went away for a few months. And now it's back and I noticed something that's returning, is my mic, is it on? Yeah, okay. Something that's returning is the point that, is the last bullet point that I had added that reads practice accountable speaking during board meetings in order to ensure all conversations are productive and efficient. And I just go on to say, it goes on to say to recognize the time and energy of the public and staff. But I remember that revisiting what I had requested to be added to this, I felt that it's hard to gauge accountable speaking. And I had asked, you know, if in any circumstance violation of any of these individual points could be grounds for censure, because when we first brought this up, it was in, it was with a censure policy. And I remember that was one of my concerns, that something so vague as accountable speaking, it's my own mistake that I used that language. But I was afraid that that could lead to problems down the road. And so I remember that, I think we had slashed that. We had different language when we took a vote, but that is when the item died. And so I want to see how the board feels about that last bullet point today.
Well, me personally, Chris, I thought that was a very excellent addition. And so accountable, and I hope it's not difficult to understand the interpretation of what you're saying when you say accountable speaking. That means stay on the subject. Stay on the subject and make sure you're student-focused and no personal agendas or egos get in the way. You know what I mean? So accountable speaking, be very respectful, stay on topic.
I think my concern was though, if, as a board, we get along pretty well right now. Further down the line, further, further down the line, if there exists a board that is less amiable with each other, then that could lead to some serious problems, I think. If we're, if the board can gang up on another board member and say, well, you go off on too many tangents, so we're going to censor you, like that could be a problem. And I don't want that to be, to be used inappropriately. So that's why I want to ask how the rest of the board feels. I'd like to hear from everyone.
This is an existing governing standard bylaw. It's just been updated. I don't know why you keep tying it to censorship.
Because when it was originally.
This is something that was just updated based on CSBA guidelines.
When it was originally brought up, it was joined. And I think I asked you at a board meeting, when, if this could be used, if these guidelines could be used when considering censure. And I think the answer I received was yes. So that's why it was a concern to me.
So it sounds like you have your answer now, which is no. It cannot be tied to censure. This is a policy just on its own, correct?
Right.
So I'm going to acknowledge board member Critchfield. I think he's waiting to say something.
I think you're totally right. I think at one point they were presented together, but I think that was a really good note that you made, bullet point. But I think given that it's not tied to censure, I think it's, it looks good.
Well, I'm happy to hear that.
Did you want to, was there something else you wanted to add?
No, in which case I'm in full support of the policy. I think it's great.
Can we confirm, Dr. Dready, that this policy as it reads now is not tied to any censure policy existing previously or at this moment? Please?
It was, it was a board bylaw that was kind of like, it was combined and it was very confusing.
Okay.
And it seemed kind of aggressive, if I should say. And so because censorship is something aggressive.
Yeah.
And that we don't want to get that mixed up.
Yeah.
Now, if a board member needs to be censored, oh my goodness, we all know.
Yeah.
But this is just a basic way to behave.
Yeah.
And so when you have a new board member to come on, instead of giving them a thick book, we can just give them this just to start off with and continue to educate ourselves and learn more and be the best board member we could be. Censorship is a whole different thing. This is to help make sure we stay within a range so that we can work together.
Yeah, so I'm happy that that distinction has been made and that this won't.
I'll look into, I'll look into, see if this is connected or decoupled or anything. So there must be another, if there's another bylaw for censorship or something, I'll be able to find it, so.
Thank you. And also if we can just confirm that censorship is not something, not that we're going to do that now or we're planning to in any future, but that that is still an option. I mean, every board has that option. It's just when does the board decide to exercise it, correct?
Yes. The times, I've only probably seen that done once with one of my peers. And it was pretty glaringly clear that needed to happen. There was no, there's no question there. So I'll definitely check on this, but the censorship stuff is usually, it's even, when you see that kind of stuff, you would almost even see that the crowd wants that, the public wants that too. It'd be very, it would be glaringly clear, at least from what I've seen before. But I will check on that.
Thank you, Dr. Dready.
And not only that, if we wanted to, we can, CSBA also has censorship bylaw that, you know, it's like I said, it's totally different. We can bring it in and put it into one of our policies in the future if you guys ever wanted to, so.
I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Dready, but you don't need, and also what Myra was saying, we don't need a censorship policy because if something's so egregious, it will be obvious censorship has to happen. That's my understanding, right? So.
That, and then for guidance, and then you'll know that right away. But based on what I'm seeing here, if that's the question, then I'm going to put it on consent next time. Well, I'll let you deliberate first, but let's say if I find something, then I'll make sure that we pull it next time around.
And just for clarification, this is an existing bylaw that was outdated since 2013? And it was just brought up to standard based on CSBA guidelines?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everyone has clarity on that.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Dready.
Let me just, to summarize, I'm going to check in on the question about censorship. If we find that there isn't anything there, then I'm going to include it in consent next time around. If there is something of interest, we're going to pull it and engage in another conversation. Okay, the next item up, I'm going to bring up Mrs. Bonnie Holden to.
We're happy to introduce with us today Lisa Azavedo, our CEO of CalApps. And she also oversees our CTE programs. She's brought people here with her as well. And she's going to give us an update on our career technical education program.
Good evening, President Myra Garza, board members, Superintendent Dr. Dready, and Cabinet, as well as our staff and guests in the audience. So good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and provide you an update on all the career tech ed programs offered to our students in Bellflower Unified. So very briefly, when we're talking about career tech ed programs, we're looking at courses that are specifically providing our students education related to career. We're looking for classes that are providing them hands-on skills. We're looking for industry-aligned materials and equipment in the classroom. We're looking for UCA through G approval. We're looking to see if they are dual enrollment or certificated courses, whether they're articulated with our community colleges. All of that is part of your career tech ed program. And when we talk about career tech ed classes, we're looking at 15 big umbrella areas or sectors. In the state of California, we have these 15 large areas. And Bellflower Unified, we offer 13 of those 15 areas. So you see highlighted in blue, two areas that we currently do not have classes in. That would be your ag area and your energy and environment area at the moment. Within those 15 sectors, there are 58 different pathways that students can participate in. And a pathway basically is a series of courses, at least two courses. Typically, we're looking at 300 hours of instruction, so that's two full years of instruction in the same content area. There are lots of different pathways within those 15 sectors that students can take. And we're going to talk about what those opportunities are in Bellflower Unified in just a moment. I know that this particular slide is fairly hard to read. It's pretty small. So please note on the top, it gives you the California Department of Ed website. You can access that at another date and time, so you can kind of look at that more specifically. So why is career tech ed important for our students within Bellflower Unified? It falls within what Dr. Dready was just talking about. What is our goal for our students? When they leave our classroom, what do we expect them to be able to do? Well, we want to ensure that our students are college and career prepared. We want to make sure that they have opportunities to do either or both. So career tech ed is important for a K-12 system to prepare students for life beyond that classroom. We prepare our students to continue on with additional education to enter a career. One of the ways K-12 systems report their effectiveness in preparing their students for college and career is by looking at that California school dashboard, specifically on the college and career indicator. So what you're looking for right now is a slide showing the college and career indicator for that dashboard. Graduates classified as prepared are more likely to be successful once they graduate. So this slide is showing you that there are eight different ways a student can show that they are prepared when they leave us. Three of them I've circled for you because those three out of eight involve career tech ed. Two of those three are that our students need to complete a CTE pathway, meaning that they need to take two courses within the same area. And they have to meet an additional criteria. That could be something like scoring, a particular score on the Smarter Balance Assessment for one of the areas, or it could be meeting all those UCA through G requirements. So your career tech ed programs are funded through the district's general fund, through that LCAP process, but we also apply for additional funding. So your career tech ed programs receive federal funds, and we call those the Carl Perkins. And we also receive state funding through the CTE funds, our career technology education incentive grant funding. Bellflower Unified has also applied for additional state funding through the K-12 Strong Workforce Program funding. And just a very quick overview, you can kind of look on that screen. We've had two of those special K-12 grants. This is a fairly new opportunity for us. One of them was to work on pathways to ensure that all of our courses were aligned and they had that industry-grade level equipment in the room. The other one was to update our auto program, and that's the combs overhaul and auto that we've done at Bellflower High. So most importantly, what do we actually offer our students? What are the pathways? So at Bellflower High School, we have production and managerial art. We have cabinetry, millwork, woodworking. We have engineering design. We have patient care. We have food service, hospitality, graphic production, technology, systems, diagnostic, service and repairs, mental and behavioral health. And if you see that little asterisk in front of the pathway, that means that it's either a new pathway to that particular site or it's been newly remodeled or newly rewritten the curriculum to align with current industry. Our pathways at Mayfair High School, some are same, some are different. They also offer cabinetry, millwork and woodworking. They offer engineering design and patient care. Those are the same, a little bit different. They offer marketing. They offer financial services, that's a different one. They have software and systems development, residential and commercial construction, and games and simulations. At Somerset High, they offer two pathways. They offer cabinetry, millwork and woodworking and engineering design. And then our Bellflower Unified students have the opportunity to participate in additional pathways through our after-school or sometimes during the day ROP program. So California Advancing Pathways for Students, as you know, is an ROP CTE program that provides services for Bellflower Paramount. that provides services for Bellflower, Paramount, and Linwood students, so your students get to participate. We have the very same expectations for our classes. We're ensuring that it's industry-aligned, that the courses are UCA through G approved, that they have industry equipment, the teachers are highly qualified, so same types of opportunities. Uh, the difference between CalApps, that ROP program, they do not receive direct funds from CTAG or from Perkins, and so their additional grant funding all comes from the K-12 Strong Workforce Grant. So we've written quite a few to support that particular program. And notice that each one is pretty unique. So we've got one for patient care, one for building a bridge, that's really the bridge between the K-12 and the community college program. We have your BioAnamaker, transforming the energy system, that's to start an energy pathway, and Taking Flight, that's going to be our new aviation pathway. So pathways that are offered in the CalApps program, there's residential and commercial construction, production and managerial arts, patient care, food service and hospitality, education, fashion design and merchandising, games and simulation, manufacturing and product development, entrepreneurship or self-employment, public safety, emergency response, and early childhood. And the beauty of this particular program, you have students that are traveling from nine different high schools that can participate because the majority of the courses are happening after school. So for example, we have culinary arts at Bellflower High. If you're a Mayfair student, you don't get to take that culinary arts program unless you join the CalApps program and you take it after school. So it opens doors for our students to be able to take pathways that they don't have at their home school site. So the fun part, what do the classrooms look like? What are you seeing when you walk into a CTE classroom? You see lots of action because yes, we're doing lots of learning, but we're focusing also on our hands-on skills. That's part of the instruction in a CTE pathway. So this is our patient care. So you'll see students working in our mock medical lab facility. You'll see students in the, um, health lab. Those are some EMT students. A lot of our students are in CPR classes during the daytime and on the weekend. This is also a picture of our athletic training room. We have athletic training in both sites. This is our TV film video program that's happening at Bellflower High. This is emergency response. This particular pathway is after school, so any student can participate. Students can take firefighting or EMT. This is our transportation pathway that's, uh, offered during the daytime at Bellflower, but also after school, so any student can participate. This is public safety, again, offered after school. Students who are interested in any type of law enforcement career, this is what they would want to do. And that picture of the police car in the photo is our brand-new police car that, um, we have just recently acquired. It's not sitting on our property yet because it still has a little minor thing that needs to be repaired before we can drive it on the road, but, um, we will soon have that car. Cabinetry, woodworking, and heavy construction. So we do a combination of both. We have some students that are really looking at, um, their fine skills of cabinetry in that construction process, and then we're also focusing on heavy construction. The LA area really has a very large need for the large, heavy construction types of skills, like electrical, masonry, cement work. We have lots of buildings and construction projects going on in LA, so we wanna make sure that we're training our students to be prepared for that. This is our new games and simulation pathway, happening at Mayfair and also after school. This is our fashion design and merchandising pathway. This is offered after school to our students. Food service and hospitality, offered at Bellflower High School and after school. This is our Makerspace. We call it Product Innovation and Design. This is, um, happening after school. This is where earlier someone mentioned seeing our drones flying at the Somerset Open House. Those students are taking this particular class. So one of the fun parts of being in a CTE program is the fact that you have these leaders, special leadership opportunities where students participate in a, an organization like FCCLA or Skills USA, and they get to go to these regional, state, and national events where they compete amongst other high school students in the same exact area. So if you're learning patient care in Bellflower, you get to go compete in maybe a health bowl, um, with other students in other high schools. And it's, um, I would say it's probably nerve-wracking for our students, right? Cause it's competitive, but it's a very special experience because they get to meet kids from all over. Um, and it's really neat. They feel very confident when they return because they get to, you know, they feel good about what they've learned. Um, and whether they have placed really high or whether they have just participated, um, we really encourage them to know it's about the opportunity. It's about the experience. It's not, we're not going there because we want you to come in first. We would like that, of course, but that's not where we're going. We're going for the experience. It's a learning experience. So what about our middle school? We often think about career tech ed at the high school level. What about our younger students? So at the middle school level on both of our campuses, we introduce our middle school students to career tech ed. Um, we have wood fundamentals courses, we have engineering, we have computer science, we have video game design, we have graphics, we have home arts, esports, and health. And our little guys at the elementary school, in the last couple of years, we've really tried to involve our elementary teachers and our elementary students in some fun, creative ways to get the thought about STEAM education into the elementary level. All of our teachers are incorporating all of these skills all of the time. But sometimes it's neat to just call it out and set it aside because it calls our parents' attention to it as well as the rest of us. We get to take that special time to do something unique on the campus. We also do visits to our elementary site. So this year Baxter Elementary requested our CTE teachers to come out at their lunchtime and speak with all of their grade levels, and so we arranged for that. We have now been asked by Washington Elementary to come do the same thing at their lunchtimes. Um, it's very fun for our teachers. They're used to working with the big guys, so they get to go down to the little guys and they come back with stories, and it's really neat for the younger students too because they're starting to learn what these different opportunities are when they get to the middle school and the high school. It's putting little seeds. So what's coming up? You've seen me talk before about what's coming up in that brand-new STEAM building, the BioAnamaker Lab. Um, we are ready to go. We have all the equipment here. We're gonna get into that building and set up that room. It's going to be amazing when you see that. We also have all of our equipment here for our virtual reality lab by Z-Space. Um, both of these labs will be used by multiple teachers, not just one. Um, teachers have the opportunity to check into these labs and use it. Um, brand-new, and this is brand-new because we just wrote the grant and were approved, Bellflower High School will be starting, uh, UAS drones and aviation pathway. So this is for students who are interested in doing either or both. They may be interested in becoming a pilot at some point in their life, or they may be interested in flying drones. There are lots of opportunities in many industries right now for drone flying. You see it with law enforcement, you see it with firefighting, you see it with real estate. Um, there are lots of needs for pilots for drone. Um, so we're gonna train our students, and we're actually working with the local community college to get that up and running for our kids. These are all of our business partners, so career tech ed pathway courses cannot function as a standalone. They need business partners, they need industry supporters. And the reason why is they're the ones that inform us of what's going on currently. How do we keep these classrooms current? What are these kids gonna see when they leave us? So our partners do that, and this is just a list of all the people that we're currently working with. And I wanted to call special attention to our district's website. We have spent some time updating the CTE information on the website. So if you're a student or a parent or community member, you go to the Bellflower Unified School District website, and on the top you have a list of different tabs you can click. If you go to that program tab, and again, I know this might be a little small for you to see, but you go to that program tab, click it. One of the programs that you can look at is career tech ed. And we've broken down that career tech ed website to a few different resources. We have things like our pathways on there. So every year you can take a look at what are the pathways? What's been updated? What's new? You can look at our CTE advisory minutes, so you can figure out what is, what are they meaning about? What are the topics they've discussed? You can look at, um, parent resources. So we created a whole page for our parents. They can go on there and find out more information about programs our students can enroll in when they leave us. They can find out financial information. There's surveys that their students can take to help them develop those interests, to figure out what, what area they may be interested in. And on that left-hand side of the screen, you see CTE videos coming soon, soon. So right now, we're working on a project district-wide for the daytime and the CalApps program where we are going into classrooms and we're interviewing a student and interviewing a teacher, and then taking some B-roll or classroom videos with the intention of putting them all together in very short videos that can be posted on the website that students and parents can view. So if they're not sure what Project Lead the Way is, they can click on it, and you can actually see what does it look like to be a student in a Project Lead the Way classroom? What are they doing? Student resources, we also created a student resource page. A lot of times when we're talking to our students, typically at the high school level, we're asking them, what are you going to do when you leave? And sometimes we get the, I don't know. And then we'll ask them, well, what are you interested in? What do you feel like you're talented in? What's your strength? I'm not sure. They can go here. Um, there are surveys that they can take to help them identify maybe areas that they might be interested in. Lastly, on this, uh, CTE site, we have some mobile apps that you can download, either put on your computer or carry it around on your phone if you're a parent or student. Again, these are just resources that will help you. So tonight, we have some special individuals with us. Um, very often, we talk about our career tech ed programs, and sometimes, um, I'll have a board member ask me, well, what happens when they leave us? You know, how, how are they doing? Do we know? Do we have a story? We have some stories for you tonight. So the very first student I'm gonna introduce to you is Melanie Gonzalez. She graduated in twenty nineteen, twenty school year with a four-point-oh GPA. She took five AP courses while attending Bellflower High School, and she completed the patient care pathway. Her CTE instructor was Melissa Ellis, who's here with her tonight. And we're gonna have Melanie come up and tell you what she's doing now, so you can hear a story from one of our students. So Melanie, come up.
Okay, good evening, President Garza, members of the board, and Cabinet, Superintendent Dr. Dready, sorry, and guest as well as staff. As you know, my name is Melanie Gonzalez, and I am speaking on behalf of Bellflower High School regarding the importance of the patient care pathway courses that I have had and continue ha- continue to have an impact in my education. So I am a Bellflower High alumnus, and I currently go to Cal State Long Beach, and I am a pre-nursing major. I was involved in multiple programs at Bellflower. Some of those that have had the biggest impact towards pursuing my bachelor's in nursing were, for starters, the Intro to Health Careers course that Bellflower High School has. That course allowed me to find and figure out what career in healthcare I wanted to pursue and which one I enjoyed the most. Not only did that course help me simplify my pathway, but it exposed me to many other pathways within healthcare. Sorry, one moment. After Intro to Health Careers, I also took the Medical Assistant Course my senior year, as mentioned. I was so excited for this course because it was more specific to what I wanted to do and study in college. During the Medical Assistant Course, I was able to acquire all the knowledge needed for the Certified Clinical Medical Assistant Exam. We learned multiple new terms and medical language that I have used to my advantage when taking science-based courses at Cal State Long Beach, such as microbiology, um, physiology, and anatomy. And then such as, besides that, we also, um, and, sorry, one moment. And what we also learned was the background of medicine and how it evolved in, in that course, and then who invented it and how it all began. I was also exposed to and gained many skills as well throughout the entire course. I learned how to apply and remove EKGs the proper way. I learned how to successfully draw blood and how to remove, um, and how to add pressure when using an elastic band. I learned the order of draw and how to apply and remove personal protective equipment properly and more. I learned how to do a resume in preparation for interviews we had in the middle of the semester. And that opportunity helped me be more prepared for job interviews as well as interviews I have had with some nursing programs currently. The skills and knowledge I've gained while taking this course has given me a head start, um, to what I was being taught in college. Aside from the two courses offered at Bellflower, I also took a CTE class for, with CalApps called Health Occupations. While taking this course, I was able to volunteer at Lakewood Regional Medical Center. During my time there, I was able to shadow and assist nurses in multiple departments, and I was able to see how they function as well. This also led me to being introduced to a program called HOSA, which is an organization for future health professionals. Um, during that year, I was able to compete and represent Bellflower at the conference they held in Sacramento. The Medical Assistant and Health Occupation Course went hand-in-hand as well because I was able to use the knowledge from one course and the other and apply them whenever it was needed. And all, all in all, the three courses had had a major impact in my pathway towards obtaining my BSN. I was able to enter college having prior knowledge and strength, strengthening my resume with the experiences I had and the volunteer hours I did through each of these courses. And when applying to the programs, having these added skills and healthcare exposure is very influential in the admission process. Another major takeaway from the Medical Assistant Course specifically was that I was able to pass the exam and become a certified medical assistant. I still have my license, which I hope to utilize in the coming months and get more healthcare experience and hours that I can continue, um, that can continue to influence my resume. I wasn't able to work as a medical assistant in the past due to personal circumstances, but I'm sure for others it would be very influential, especially because lots of nursing programs are recommending that you have work hours within hospitals or some kind of healthcare experience. And I know it's hard to get that kind of experience once you leave high school, um, which makes the programs that much more special, and just the knowledge in itself is priceless, especially because of the skills you learn along the way. Having this license can, having this license can also give students the opportunity to get a job right outside of high school. Um, that is within the medical field. And with all of these three courses provided to students, it can play a huge role in their pathway towards a health career like it did mine, and it continues to have a huge role. It opens doors and provides numerous opportunities. The exposure and experiences you get while completing these patient pathway courses show a lot of nursing programs that you witness firsthand what it's like to, um, what it takes and what it's like to be a nurse, what they do, which is what the programs are interested. They want to know essentially what you're signing up for when you want to pursue a BSN and get, and become a registered nurse. And then also keep in mind that while I was taking these classes, these classes, these classes, it was during two thousand twenty, which is when lockdown took place. Um, but I imagine all the hands-on skills and experiences and opportunities I could have gained aside from the first semester would be like, like unimaginable because we only did the first semester, and now imagine just the other half of what I was able to, what I could have done. Um, so right now, I'm sure that the experiences and the skills that current students are obtaining are even greater than what I was thankfully able to have and put towards my resume and degree after graduating. I was also able to create many of my favorite memories regarding healthcare through these programs. That is all. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Melanie. The next student I'd like to introduce is Mark Rodriguez. He is a senior right now at Mayfair High School. His current GPA is four-point-three. He's taken six AP courses. Upon graduation, Mark will be a Games and Simulation Pathway completer. He is Mayfair's very first, and this is a big deal, very first esports student to sign and receive both an academic and athletic scholarship for a four-year college, which he plans to attend this coming fall. His instructor is Victor Palacios, better known as Wiz. Mark, come on up.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Mark Rodriguez. Um, I'm a student of the Games and Simulation Pathway with my teacher Victor Palacios. I was about, I was about to say this, but she didn't say it first, so. I am the first student in the Bellflower Unified School District to receive an, receiving an esports scholarship. And I've gotten this far because of the, of the CalApps program. They first introduced the, the esports course during my, during my freshman year. And the things that I learned in esports is that, is that, um, I'm so sorry. Um, that, in that esports, it's not just about playing video games. It's about treating, treating video games as a sport. So like, for example, racketeering, statistics, broadcasting, um, graphic art design, commentary, et cetera. And these are the things that all sports have, that esports also have. So once again, I would, I would like to give thanks to the CalApps program for providing career technical education courses such as esports. And I would also to say thanks to my, to my esports teacher, Victor Palacios. He created the esports program at Mayfair, and I hope that the Mayfair esports team will be at the forefront at the CIF Esports, CIF.
Thank you, Mark. Um, our final student joining us this evening is Dylan Delgado Dion. Dylan is a junior at Mayfair High School and currently has a three-point-two GPA. His instructor is Victor Palacios. We have a very short video that we'd like to share with you about Dylan, so can we share that video first?
Hello. My name is Victor Palacios, junior. I'm also a resident. I am the esports and gaming instructor and platform engineer here at Mayfair. I'm also a graduate, class of 97, from Mayfair High School. Dylan Delgado is a junior here at Mayfair. He's taking my esports and gaming class, Level 1. The day I met Dylan, he had an aide with him guide him to his classroom. As I noticed Dylan having this aide, it put me in a situation where I had to understand why the aide was there. Come to having a conversation with you, the aide had explained to me that Dylan had some type of visual impairment where he could not see. And I thought to myself, a student that can't see that's taking esports. How do I approach this?
How you doing? Give some love, man. Give some love. Good to see you, man. All right, let's get going, and let's get our project rolling. Cool.
I was born visually impaired, but even though I have a visual impairment, I've been playing fighting games since I was only seven years old. Being in WIZ's esports class, I've learned how to stream. And for a lot of people, I think that that's something that they never really picture when they think of someone with a visual impairment. And it's being in an esports course has been very, it's been a new experience for me since I've never really been in an esports environment. First, I am using a laptop that has the JAWS screen reader installed. With this, I can audibly know what's on the screen. So we are on the desktop right now. And in order to go to the application I need, I can hit letter shortcuts depending on what letter the application starts with. So in this case, OBS. So I'm going to hit the O until you find OBS. Once you're on OBS, I hit Enter. Then after the roads, I switch over to my center. All right. Here I have a stream that I use. It has all of my presets in order to make streaming easier for me. I have my start stream right there. I have my gameplay screen right here, my ending screen. And down here, I have my start and end recording. And over here, I have start and end stream. So first, I started recording and started streaming. From there, I can just switch over to my gameplay. And now, the gameplay and my A's is visible on the screen. So I'm going to do a quick match. Okay. Now I can switch over to my gameplay. I can end my recording. And a while, yeah, I can end. Right. And and that's the entire streaming process that I go through. I've always mostly kept to myself what I like doing. So I, giving me the opportunity to do what I like and accomplish something that I would have never imagined accomplishing in WIZ's esports class is something that has made me change a lot. I've even started breaking out of my shell in esports class. And these changes are something that me, a lot to me as someone that is normally exposed to these kinds of environments.
Dylan Delgado, a student that has been able to overcome odds and show the world at gaming.
I'm Dylan Delgado, and I've been taking WIZ's esports class this last semester and this second semester. And in his class, he has done something that not a lot of people would know how to handle. And that's helping someone that has visual problems stream, which is something that you would think requires you to be able to see. He, as far as I know, never had any type of similar situations. And so for him to make such an effort to help me accomplish something that all of my other peers can accomplish and help me do something that I've never really considered possible for me because of my visual impairment, it meant a lot to me. And me and WIZ are going to work to create career paths for me in the esports industry where we've perfected the streaming process. We've been given access to all the technology we need in order to make the streaming process for me possible. And we plan on working this semester on growing and creating a platform for me in the esports industry. And we are also planning to start a nonprofit organization. We're going to be working on it next year. I'm going to be retaking WIZ's esports class. And we're going to make this possible. And the overall goal is to create an organization that can help other kids like me that have interests in fighting games and in the esports industry in general. Because with the new generation, I think video games and the esports industry in general is growing faster and faster, especially since parents are giving their kids things like iPads or gaming consoles at younger and younger ages. This industry is just going to keep on growing, and there's going to be more students like me that don't have someone with the knowledge or commitment that WIZ had with me. And I just want to be able to find these students and help them achieve what I've achieved with WIZ. And I think that this is more than possible, especially since there's so many people that are going to be helping me. You've got WIZ, Rad Roach, who is the person that filmed and edited the video you just watched, Andy and David, who worked with me creating visually appealing, all the visually appealing overlays. And they also would stream with me. And I think we have a great team dynamic going. And it's just a matter of time until we accomplish everything that we want to accomplish.
So again, thank you for supporting our career tech ed programs. As you can see, we're a very diverse group, a very passionate staff of teachers who really try super hard, all of our CTE teachers do, to make our classes inclusive for all. So thank you for having me tonight.
Have you guys got any comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I'm going to try not to get emotional. First of all, Lisa, you do amazing work with CalApps. Give her a round of applause because you've done so much. And I have the distinct pleasure with Dr. Alhessen to sit on the board so I get to see a lot of the stuff that you do, and it's really, really amazing. And WIZ, Mr. Palacios, like just seeing like the, I could tell how proud you are of them just watching you, and it really means a lot. So I have a daughter with special needs, and she loves to stream, and she plays games just to know that there's something like this happening right now. So when she does get to Mayfair, because right now she's in Lindstrom, it really warms my heart, so thank you.
I just want to comment too that I'm familiar with JAWS, but I never used, I've never seen it used in animation from that perspective. So good job on using an existing accommodation that can support our students in moving ahead. Thank you.
I also had a comment. I want to just thank you so much for what you do as a teacher for our kids. I really appreciate it. And it feels a lot longer, but I haven't even been here two months. But Lisa, you do do a great job. And everywhere, every place that I've visited and I look at these programs, they're amazing. So thank you for what you do.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, for sure. One for me. I just want to say that the CalApps program and Career Technical Education really does impact us students. Like from everyone, all of my friends who are in the programs, who are in a CalApps program, people who I just know are in those programs, those are really staples of their, of their high school experience. Those are highlights of their time. And I think it, beyond just the practical skills that students gain from them, I think that their character is built up from those programs as well. And I want to say, I want, Mark, Mark is a pioneer at Mayfair. He's been really getting the word about esports. He's, you know, been probably the biggest advocate for esports on our campus, and he's really expanded the program. So Mark is tremendous in that sense. Leah, who's right behind Mark, Leah Simmons, is in Skills USA. I believe she wanted, she had something to say today, but I think she missed a comment period. But I will say that Leah is in AP Economics with me. She's in AP Literature with me, and she still finds the time to do Skills USA. And so all of our students who are in these programs are incredible. And lastly, Dylan, I've seen you around campus. I've walked past you, and I never knew that you were so involved and that you were a pioneer in that sense. So I really appreciate what you're working on with WIZ. And I'm really proud to go to school with you, so.
I just want to say my daughters have participated in the CalApps program and, you know, the whole staff and Dr. Sue, and now Brad, you're on the board, you know, and it's continuing to grow. It's very, very exciting. So it works, I mean, a broad range in which, you know, these kids can come with varying, varying interests. So, but this is the first that I've seen in this. So very excited. And even me, I teach early childhood special education. I bring AI into the classroom, artificial intelligence type things in the class. So even from the youngest kid all the way up, the exposure is very, very important. So thank you.
I just want to say ditto to all the comments, and congratulations, Mark. We hope that you continue to do exciting things wherever you're going to go, and you have such a bright future ahead of you. And so, and Dylan as well. Thank you so much for representing us.
I'll just say one last comment about, first and foremost, you guys do an awesome job. You know, when Mrs. Azaveto and Ms. Holden came to my office this week and were presenting this, the information, man, I was like, wow, okay. This is what I meant by this place has great bones, right? And I'm hoping that, look, I'm hoping that people see the gem that exists in this district and start speaking positive of what's actually happening here. I think it's that important. The more positive we speak about what's happening here, the more people are going to be, understand. You're going to start seeing, at least the stuff I'm seeing coming from outside, about what's in place right now. So I love the fact that we have this vast CTE programs approaches here. And I know we were geeking out in my office about the possibilities in the future about integrating other subjects with them and all that kind of stuff. So like, like where you see a high-tech high in some of these other places. So I really do look forward to expanding on some of this work and really supporting it. So great job, great job.
Next on the agenda.
Hi. I'm not sure if I could connect the slides, but it is too late. Good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Simmons, a senior, and I am the president of Skills USA Mayfair High School Chapter. You might be wondering, what is Skills USA? Skills USA is a nonprofit national education association that was founded in 1965. Skills USA serves middle, high, and college students preparing for careers who are enrolled in trade, technical, and skilled service occupation training programs. Nationally, there are over 430,000 members. Locally, our Skills USA chapter at Mayfair High School has around 100 members studying in 19 different career technical education programs such as computer science, marketing, engineering, business, accounting, and medical billing and coding, to name a few. Skills USA's mission is to empower its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. We aim to improve the quality of our nation's future skilled workforce. During my time at Skills USA, I have been able to implement the knowledge I've gained from the Skills USA framework. These past few days, we conducted several activities in line with Skills USA Week, which is celebrated nationwide since February is also Career Technical Education Month. On Monday, we did a cleanup drive for the Give Back Day by helping custodians clean up around campus after school. This act of kindness brought smiles to our custodians' and staff's faces. We were also able to get non-members to join in on helping us clean. Tuesday, we posted framework stories of members' experiences with Skills USA on our Instagram account. And yesterday, we gave recognition to our active members in line with Recognition Day. We are fortunate that we have school board members, administrators in our school, and leaders in our school's district who are supportive of our endeavors. These activities would not have been possible without everyone's support. In Skills USA, we are united as one. And although I'm sad that my secondary education is coming to a close, I know that I am prepared to face the new challenges with the lessons I've learned from Skills USA. The time is now for me to face these challenges head-on because I am well-prepared. The time is not only mine, but also yours. Skills USA, our time is now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We're going to move on now to approval of minutes. The next item of business is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda 10.1.1?
Motion to approve minutes?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. At last month's meeting, there was a correction made by Dr. Sue last month to correct the motion to nominate Mr. Critchfield for the CalAps member with a second by Renita Armstrong. After that, after staff reviewed the video of this item, it was determined that I made that second and not Renita Armstrong. Thank you. So, questions?
Yeah, we checked it. We checked it over and over. So that's accurate there, so.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Let's take roll call, please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 10.1.2, Approval of Minutes, February 2nd, 2023, Special Meeting?
You have that second. I mean, I'll second it since she moved it.
So, moved by Dr. Alhessen?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's moved by me.
And seconded by Ms. Armstrong. Thank you. Questions, questions or comments? And hearing none, please take roll call.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Moving on to consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold Items 10.3.1.1. And?
So, this one is about the calendar that we established for the board meetings. We realized we did it in haste. Oh, got it. All right, my fault. Go ahead.
And do I have a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Questions or comments? Then, let's take roll call, please.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Dr. Drati? Dr. Drati? And we need a point of order.
Yeah, we, we.
First and a second to discuss. Or you just need to get a motion to discuss it? So, it's right there. The next item of business are the items that have been withheld. Sorry. So, withheld items. The next item of business are the items that have been withheld from the consent agenda. The first agenda item withheld tonight is Agenda Item 10.3.1.1, Calendar, Board of Education Meetings. Do I have a motion? So moved?
Second. Brad seconds.
Mr. Critchfield, second. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually requested this. I know when we made the calendar is pretty quick. But on May 11th, there is an event that I think the board has typically attended. The Community Family Guidance Center has an annual event. And as we engage in the community, I think it'd be great for us to continue our participation and attend. So I was going to, for the board's consideration, instead of May 11th, we would go to the May 9th. I know the second meeting that month is a retreat, so I think it's important that we do have a meeting. So, I would recommend May 9th as a substitute, but I'm open to any other.
I don't recall that being a regular meeting for the board to attend. Correct me if I'm wrong. Did you, Renita?
In, in May, I have May 11th and May 25th. At least that's what I have.
Right. Did we usually as a board attend the community fair?
We attend if we, if we choose to.
Yeah, but it's, it's never conflicted with a board meeting. Is that what you're saying?
No, because we, it's never conflicted.
Let me look at the calendar.
Yes, I believe I've attended. Because there hasn't been a conflict. But I, I'm in agreement. I think it is something that if we choose to go to, we can move that day. And if everybody is in agreement, then we can just change the date to, I believe you, which one was it that you mentioned, 11th?
Yeah, so the May 11th. I know Tuesday meeting, the May 9th would, might work. But, and again, I know when we made the, the annual calendar, we made it pretty quick. And I think it's just important in the future, when we make our school board meetings, do as much as we can to still engage in the community and make, make ourselves available for that. But, I mean, obviously, our meetings are, take priority. But as we set out a calendar for the rest of the year, I think making amendments from time to time might, might come in handy.
And while we're also on the subject of accommodating for community events, I believe this upcoming February 23rd meeting is at the same time as Mayfair's.
I was just going to say that. If we're going to do that, then we need to change to other dates. The 23rd, February.
It's the fair at Mayfair, so Mayfair's open house.
Oh, yes. Thank you for bringing that up.
So, why don't we relook at the dates? Because it's getting more confusing. Because I know May 9th, we have, I think, our CalAps meeting. Or is it, no, we moved it to the second. We moved it to the second. So, we're supposed to have two meetings in May. So you want the 11th and won't be the second one, Dr. Drati?
I think.
I don't have the calendar in front of me.
I believe, I believe the, the motion that Mr. Critchfield put on the May 9th, the only thing we're checking on right now is there's a PTA meeting, a, 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 a meeting that night. I'm actually thinking, I can reconstitute that, that month and just do one board meeting. You know what I mean? It's just a matter of moves them items around.
That is the retreat, the quarterly retreat meeting though?
Got it.
I mean, I, the reason I wanted to bring it up now, because it is in May, so we have some time. But maybe it might be worthwhile to sit down and go through the year.
Yeah. Let's, let's do that. So instead of trying to figure it out here, let's, let's just put some aside and then try to figure it out.
So the 11th and 25th are due, because I saw that, 11th and 25th?
So, if we're planning on going through the calendar, at that time, would you want us to present to you, like, items like that? You know, like, I know I have back-to-school night and open house, and I have a meeting here, so that's a conflict for me. Do you want us to present those things to you?
Yes. If you guys, since I'm going to be looking anyway, so if you have conflicts and things like that, you see, let me just know, let me know right away, so that way I can make some suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
So for immediate correction, we need to decide what we're going to do for February, so we can attend the open house for Mayfair. So, on February, do you want to just make it that one meeting, or is that supposed to be, we only meet once for the month of February? Or do you want to meet on the 16th, which is kind of back-to-back, but?
Well, I would say it's important that we meet still. So, obviously, I would like there to be an accommodation, but if there's no accommodation possible, then I, like Brad said, this, our meetings still take priority. So unfortunately, we're going to have to miss the fair if there's no other way to do this. But if there is, I'd like to hear it.
Well, like I was saying, we can meet on the 16th versus the 23rd.
We'll have to check if that date is available. It's a whole mess with the calendar.
It's just another Thursday, but I'm just saying, if you want to keep the 23rd open for Mayfair, I'm sorry, if you want to keep the 23rd open, we can do it the week following week, or we can skip it.
We do need a meeting. We have to approve, there's some things time-wise that we have to have, like the school safety plan and all that. Let me try to see if we can, I mean, it doesn't have to be Thursday. We're going to try to look at, see if we can do like a Wednesday or something. And I'll try to figure something in that week out. So I'll tell you what, just send me your conflicts. Maybe I'll work on that tomorrow and try to get something out on a Friday memo. And then get a thumbs up over the weekend, and then we'll, we'll bring it to the next board meeting then.
Okay. As for the, what was the specific motion?
So we're gonna, we're gonna hold on, we're not going to make a decision right now.
So we table it?
Yes, we're on table.
So, I'd make a motion to table the item for further discussion?
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. The next item, the agenda item withheld tonight is Agenda Item. Ms. Garza, there was no other agenda item, so no need to, just move on to next. Sorry about that. There's an extra one here. So, thank you. Informational items. Do we have any questions regarding the informational items this evening? So, in hearing none, we're going to go on to Board, Student, Member, Staff comments. It's time for comments from Dr. Drati.
I had, I had comments earlier, but I think I was going to postpone after the following board meeting, so that was a typo there. I think there was something I was going to talk about, the Williams report, but we're going to hold that to the 23rd instead of tonight.
Thank you. So, Board of Education Members and Student Board Member Communications and Reports, let's begin with Mr. Mendoza.
Good evening, everyone. So I've had a pretty busy few weeks since the 19th. I attended Division Nights. I learned a great deal about Somerset High School and Bellflower High School. The students of each school are my constituents, and I can do a better job in representing their interests. So, I was really happy to get to learn more about what their day-to-day lives look like on their campuses. I learned a lot about Somerset and how its crediting programs work. It was just really informational for me. I also personally met with Tia Ewing, the principal of Los Flores Independent Home Study, to learn more about the campus I know the least about, or I knew the least about, because she was extremely informative. And she enlightened me about what happens at Los Flores. And her and I both agree that Los Flores is Bellflower's best-kept secret in a way. My compliments to the administrators, educators, and students over at Los Flores. I was really impressed by their, their, by their school. I also viewed Shrek the Musical over at Mayfair High School. It was the first musical the school has had since the pandemic hit. The production quality was stellar, the cast is fantastic, and the show was incredibly endearing. A shout-out to Mr. Brian Saunders, the tech crew, and the wonderful cast of students, and I can't wait to see Sister Act over at Bellflower soon. My compliments to Mayfair High School's Mariners and Showtime programs. So their instructor, Gina Holcomb, had to step away from instruction for some time for, for personal matters. And the elected boards of those programs, students who are in those programs, stepped up, and they actually created lesson plans for their younger students. So, they, they, they already are loaded with AP classes. If they're leaders in their, in their programs, you know, they're, they're academic students, they're involved students, so they already had enormous amounts of schoolwork. And yet they stepped up to create lesson plans. In particular, my friends Soraya Hill and Trinity Faulkner took on enormous loads of work in these last two weeks. And I believe, I believe they deserve to be recognized for becoming both teacher and student at the same time. Before I speak on some personal projects I'm involved with, I'd also like to call attention to a unique opportunity available to California high school students this month. The State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman, is looking for new applicants to serve on the State Youth Advisory Council. Members of this council will advise educational policymakers by using their perspective as students and help shape the laws that come out of Sacramento. Applications are open this month, and I encourage all of you to visit my Instagram page, @busdsbm, to find the link to learn more information. So, onto some personal projects that I've been working on or I've been involved in. Last month, I gave you all an update on Mayfair UNICEF Club's ongoing collaboration with the nonprofit Gravity Water. We've been able to raise a little bit more money, but our, our campaign is still pretty slow. However, some good news I can report is that we're starting to collaborate with our Activities Director at Mayfair High School, Amanda McAndrew. And so hopefully, this will become a school-wide campaign in the coming weeks. Also, I know I've been talking a lot about the Carpenter House Museum project that I've been working on with Mayfair High School's History Club, and I have some news to report. This upcoming Monday, at a regular city council meeting, the city council will vote on whether or not to approve or give us authorization to go all-in with the project. So I'm really hoping for a yes vote, and if they give us that yes vote, we'll be collaborating with LA County Library, with the Clifton Brackenstich Library. And we're going to use their archival technologies like scanners and printers to really make our website as professional as possible and provide that resource of, of local history to Bellflower residents. Lastly, as far as the ongoing labor negotiations go, I'd like to make it clear that I have no more knowledge than any of you do, and I am not part of the negotiation process. However, because I have no official stake in those conversations, I'm a little freer than my colleagues to share my view on this issue. This process has gone on for a long time now, and every teacher I have spoken to has expressed some level of pessimism about the outcome of negotiations. And that was really disheartening to me. When I spoke, I spoke to a foreign language teacher at Bellflower High School during their Vision Night, and he was talking about, he told me that he wanted to retire students so he could spend time with his grandchildren. But, you know, looming over our conversation was the question of, would he be able to afford it? Would he be able to, to retire and, and live in dignity and with enough money to, to spend time and raise his, his grandchild? So, you know, this is an extremely important issue. I know when Dr. Drati arrived at the district, he made very clear during, during our board retreat, when we had the former Long Beach School District Superintendent present, he had said that Long Beach accomplished great things, but here at Bellflower, we can, we can, we can beat Long Beach. We can become a model for other districts in the area. And if we want to really be a model for districts in the area, we have to, we gotta have competitive pay. Since if you want to be better than other districts, our, our, our pay has to be at par or better than other districts around us. And from the numbers that I've seen, it's, it's pretty grim. So I'm confident, and, and I'm confident, I'm confident, I'm confident. I, I am confident from the updates that I've gotten, from, from the general positivity from the Teachers Association, that negotiations are going in the right direction. And all I can do is just hope that all this, this works out. And, and, and like Dr. Drati was showing, this theory of action, students' performance is directly linked to the teacher's ability to, to perform in the classroom. And so, you know, our teachers work, they, they give our students, you know, they give us Chromebooks, and they have to walk around through the halls and make sure we're not gaming. I'm serious. People game in class. That's no news to you guys. And so, and so I know, I know we've had some teachers request things like, what's it called? Like programs where they can keep track of what their students are working on, Go Guardian. So they can keep track of what their students are working on in class, and that's something that they've emphasized an interest in. But so far, they haven't been able to get a hold of that program in their classrooms. I know Mayfair High School for sure piloted Go Guardian during the pandemic, and it was helpful because obviously students are asynchronous, there's no way to, to check what they're doing. So that was helpful. I know Ms. Parks, you spoke earlier, used that at some point during my quizzes when I was in her class. I have academic integrity, guys. Don't worry. But yeah, so basically, our teachers, our teachers work hard. They have less tools than surrounding districts. And it's, if we really want to set high goals for ourselves and be idealistic and say that, you know, we have to, we gotta, we gotta beat Long Beach. We're going to be a great district, we have to start with teacher pay. So. we have to start with teacher pay. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that's my view, even though I have no actual official role in the, in the negotiation process. So I, I mean, thank you guys for coming out here. If you're not here with, uh, the teachers, uh, association, you wouldn't see it, but, uh, actually, is everyone here with the teachers association? Is there anyone? Wow, pretty good. Well, for people at home, for people at home, you don't realize it, but across the street at Ramona Elementary School, their cafeteria is packed right now with other, uh, members of the teachers association. I'm not sure if they're still here, because it's been a, it's been a longer meeting. Um, but we, uh, uh, because staff and I, uh, and I say "I" because I was literally pushing these chairs, uh, during, during four PM and six PM, actually wheeled over a bunch of chairs over to Ramona, we set it up for, for, uh, overflow, and we set up a ViewSonic in there. Um, and so, you know, people are here, people are watching. Uh, it's not just the people who are in this room right now who, who care about, uh, about this issue. So that's it for me, and, um, thanks for listening, guys.
Board Member Armstrong?
Hello, and again, thanks for coming out, uh, tonight to, uh, watch your board work together. Uh, so a few activities that I did, um, I attended the outgoing ceremony for, uh, Bellflower's, uh, mayor, for, for Mayor Ray Dutton. So he was, um, he was honored, and, uh, uh, some of the board members, uh, from Bellflower, we presented him with, um, with their certificate for his, his work. And, um, I did my normal LACSA, that's LA County School Trustees Association, I did my normal meeting with them. Um, I didn't have to go to it, uh, we, we had it virtually, because it was all the way in Palmdale this time. And I, I attended the navigation night at Bellflower High School. And, um, I have a, a new adventure that I have started, and, uh, I am what is called, um, a wellow, so I, what I do is I'm learning about water, so water education. And, um, it, 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 water is, is liquid gold. And I'm going all up and down the state, learning about, uh, about the water shortage, the storage, groundwater, the rivers, and how they, how it all ties in to, to California. Um, uh, urban development, because no matter what, we need water. Um, I've been working with the city of Lakewood and Bellflower to learn about their water systems. And, uh, and, and, and they're very excited to be a partner with me and help me learn, uh, more about water systems. Um, it's, it's a lot, very exciting, but, um, it is a lot. So, um, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Board Member Armstrong. Dr. Alhessen?
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Um, I also attended with, um, Bellflower High School Navigation Night, it was really a good program. And I just wanna update about some, um, CalAps CTE program. We're currently doing a filming and video project, which started on February eighth, yesterday, at Bellflower High School, where courses will be filmed, and the filming will take place from the eighth to the fifteenth. And teachers, uh, CTE teachers, as well as one student from each course, will be interviewed to create a three-minute video for each pathway within the district. And I already started receiving some, thanks, Ms. Avizito, on YouTube. And this is gonna be continuing with Mayfair High School CTE courses, will be filmed, um, in the fall, once the teachers have moved into the new STEM building. Also, Skills USA, um, this Saturday, the fourth, uh, well, last Saturday, excuse me, was this, uh, Skills USA regional competition for our middle school and high school students. And Bellflower has sixteen students competing in the leadership and skills areas of medical assisting, community action project, technical design, team engineering, and community service. Somerset has three students competing in telecommunications, kabeline robotics, automation technology. And Mayfair has thirty-five students competing in the leadership and skill areas of outstanding chapter, promotional bulletin, American spirit, job skills demonstration, um, engineering, technology, video news production, employment application processes, um, engineering challenge creed, CO2 race designs, uh, prepared speech, as well as architectural drafting, and others. As they continue on, we will have results this month to determine which students qualify to be moving to Skills USA state competition, which will be over spring break, April twelfth through the sixteenth. And, um, I'd also wanted to mention that this is usually not talked about too much, but it's a great program through Kaiser Permanente. And, correct me if I say this wrong, Lisa, um, the Hippocrates Circle? Hippocrates Circle. And so this past, um, Tuesday evening, we, the Kaiser held their circle orientation night for twenty-three of the Bellflower Middle School students. And the circle consists of five events, all sponsored by Kaiser Permanente. Bellflower Middle School, um, applied for the program, and this is the only middle school that provided the Hippo- Hippocrates Circle in the Ca- Kaiser Downey area. Um, one school selected each year, and this, this is the second time Bellflower Middle School has been selected. The next event will be taking place on Wednesday, February fifteenth. The reason I bring this up is that it's also a great, um, program for medical stu- middle school students to start to venture on the opportunities in the medical field. And lastly, I wanted to talk about, we had talked about this with one of my former Linwood, um, board members, about the early childhood program. And I realized that Bellflower has a Bellflower Early Link program. The Bell program is a free-for-residents, Bellflower Unified, serves children zero to five years of age. And the program can serve up to twenty-four students and their parents as, and/or caregivers. It's designed to help children and their parents participate in activities that develop cognitive, social, emotional, and physical skills. So currently, as of today, we have twenty families who have completed the application process and have joined the program. It's offered four days a week for three hours. And, um, parents have the opportunity to select their level of involvement and their scheduled permits, I'm losing my voice, each month, on designated Fridays, a teacher will plan a STEM-related activity. So I wanted to share that, if anyone's interested, there's still some slots available. Also, in honor of Black History Month, I wanted to read a poem by Maya Angelou. And she's, um, this is part of her poem, Still I Rise. And she states, "You may shoot me with your words, you may cut me with your eyes. You may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I'll rise." And thank you. Hope everyone has a happy Valentine's next week, and take advantage of our students in regards to the sinking Valentines. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alhessen. Um, Ms. Stewart?
Good evening. I'm a little under the weather tonight, so just bear with me. Um, so in the past few weeks, I attended a lot of really awesome events in our community. I attended Vision Night at Somerset High School, um, student board member Mendoza was also there. I met with Principal Higgins, and he gave me a tour of the campus and the classrooms. I really loved the programs that I saw there. Sometimes the continuation schools, they're just thought of in a certain way, and that's definitely not, um, what I saw. I thought it was amazing. I loved the workshop, that was my favorite part, and I just thought it was very innovative and cool. And I love that they're able to do PE, there was a weight room, they were able to build and study robotics. And the core curriculum was really cool, because they integrated a lot of technology into their classroom, and so I really appreciated seeing that. I met their counselor in their wellness center, and it was beautiful, and I just really enjoyed my night with them, uh, my night there with them. I attended Navigation Night at Bellflower High School. Principal Lundgren gave myself and my colleague Vice President Critchfield a tour of the, the campus, the classrooms, and, uh, we saw a lot of programs in effect. We saw a lot of positive things on campus, we saw things that could be better. Definitely looking at some of the classrooms and the science lab, I can see where we can, um, make improvements in some of those areas. We saw a lot of the CTE and CalAps programs in motion, and I love the hands-on skill classes the most. I loved the auto shop, um, the culinary arts program was amazing, the food was delicious. The health, science, and medical technology was really awesome as well. Um, we spoke to their science department, we visited their wellness center, and spent a lot of time with their counselor, and got a lot of, um, good feedback. And I just really enjoyed seeing even our coaches representing, and just having stations for the middle school students that were attending that night, just to kind of promote their programs. So that was really awesome, too. I had a meeting with Dr. Droudi and our Dean of Climate and Control, uh, Climate and Culture, Ms. Casey from Bellflower High School. Um, we just kind of collaborated on how we can cultivate the best climate that we can in our district, and just trying to, you know, brainstorm, come up with ideas, and I look forward to more collaboration with our educational partners in the future. I attended Shrek the Musical at Mayfair as well, um, with some of my friends that are teachers at Lindstrom, and that was pretty awesome. I think Mr. Saunders did an amazing job with our students. I loved the performance. The kids were just so inspirational, and they're just such talented actors and singers. I even joked with my dad, I tried to get my daughter to go, she wouldn't go. I tried to get my dad to go, he wouldn't go. So I was sending him videos, and I was like, "You guys should have won," and they were like, "Wow, these, they're really good." And I was like, "They are." They're like, "Amazing." So I just thought they did such a great job. Um, it was just very entertaining, the sets, it was beautiful, the designs. I was given a tour of the dragon at the end of it by, um, it was created by one of our former students, he's, um, in the CalAps program. And it was just really cool, the way that they made this dragon, and so I took pictures, and I was geeked out as well. Um, so it was just very innovative. I attended a study session, uh, with our board colleagues and our executive cabinet, and I just really appreciate all of those, because it's just educating myself. And then I can come back to our community and educate you guys as well, and stay in touch with you on what's happening. I also attended PTA Council this week on Tuesday. It's really nice hearing about their upcoming events. Again, I just implore you to become members and to really, like, work with them and, you know, support our families and kids. At their next meeting, they're gonna be honoring twenty-four of our students for their outstanding artwork, and they're gonna be giving out awards, including the Award of Excellence, the Award of Merit, and the Award of Recognition. So I will continue to promote PTA. I told you guys, I'm gonna be there for them, and I hope we can get more involvement from our community. And just last, um, because I've been sick the last week, I've been watching a lot, I don't watch a lot of TV, but I've been watching a lot of TV, uh, more than usual, and I just wanna, you know, say, and, you know, my heart and thoughts go out to the people in Turkey. It's just so tragic what's happening there. I've been crying for pretty much a week. And just living in California, I just, it reminds me that we also need to make sure that we have quality earthquake procedures, that we have those in place for our students and our staff as well, and so I just wanna keep that in mind, um, for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Stewart. Board Member Critchfield?
Well, it's always really hard to follow Amy. But like, uh, my fellow board members, there were a lot of events the past couple weeks. Uh, so I'll just, uh, I don't have very much thunder left with events here. But, uh, first of all, thank you all for, for being here and being engaged in, uh, sitting through a, a longer board meeting. Uh, I know, uh, the board appreciates it. Um, so as far as, uh, what's been going on the past couple weeks, did go to the, uh, exit ceremony with a fellow, uh, colleague Armstrong, uh, for, uh, Ray, Ray Dutton, recent Mayor Ray Dutton. Uh, and we presented him with a certificate of appreciation for his service to the community. Uh, Bellflower Navigation Night was really awesome. Uh, like, uh, my colleague Stewart said, we took a tour around the, the campus, saw some things that could be improved, but also a re- a lot of really cool things. And, you know, again, uh, Lisa and, and her team with, uh, CalAps, tho- those facilities are amazing, so it was great to see all of those. Um, then the Shrek Musical was really cool. I did get my daughter to go with me, but she's younger, so I couldn't kind of make her go. Um, and she had a blast, uh, doing that. I didn't get the cool geeked-out pictures like Amy with her head in the dragon, but, uh, it was still really fun to do. Um, I also went to the, the Lakewood Seroptimist, uh, Women's Live Your Dream event, which is really cool. And they, just a little plug for them, they have the Lakewood Run coming up, and that supports their, uh, Live Your Dream event, which, uh, goes towards, uh, scholarships for women who have, uh, been victims of domestic violence, and also helps the Lakewood Sheriff's Station, too, so it's a really great five-k event, not difficult, go out there, run around the city, it's really fun. Um, the following day, went to Somerset High School and, uh, got to fly some drones with the students, that was really fun. Uh, I'm kind of a drone, uh, geek myself, so it was kind of fun, uh, showing them some things there. Uh, what else, what else? Um, we, oh, uh, Dr. Droudi and I went to the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce event in the morning. We got to introduce ourselves to the community. Uh, Dr. Droudi talked to the group, and again, I, I wanna just, uh, really acknowledge uh, you and your work, getting out in the community and really taking your listening tour, uh, to the fullest and re- really getting out there. Um, I thought that was a great event. And also, the Mayfair wrestling team had a match, and that was really fun. I'm a wrestler myself, so it was really fun, it's kind of like my comfort zone. Uh, but also shout-out to Coach Ibi and the whole team, they're doing great stuff over there. And I believe Coach Ibi and the team are getting acknowledged at the, uh, Hall of Fame event, uh, that's coming up, uh, for Lakewood. And on that note, it'd probably be good for us to have our own Hall of Fame event with Bellflower High School and Mayfair. So we gotta figure that out, either get them involved with that, or set up our own, I think that'd be a really cool thing. Um, let's see, what else? CalAps board meeting, again, Lisa, amazing. And, uh, okay, on top of my full-time job doing all this, uh, and spending time with the family, I've also been watching a lot of other, uh, district board meetings, uh, just to see what we could do better here, uh, at Bellflower. And a couple things came to mind, I'm just gonna throw them out there, and I hope they kind of get there. But I think one thing that Long Beach does that is really good is, uh, all of their board meetings are in Spanish as well. And I feel like because of our, our demographics, I think it'd be really important for us to translate our board meetings to Spanish, and also, uh, have a recap or a highlight for, uh, for our parents, and also have them available on YouTube. They're easier to share, they're more accessible, there's like little things like that that we can do to really show our commitment to being engaged in the community and making all the information accessible. So other than that, thank you all for a, a great meeting and, and being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Critchfield. Um, so now on to me. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Uh, I also wanna say, I also, I wasn't able to be out as much as my fellow board members this last month. Um, I, like you, uh, had a lot of, uh, reports due to my teachers, um, knowing, wanting to know exactly how their students were doing. Uh, so I was a little busy doing that, but I did get out to watching the Shrek, uh, Musical with, um, you know, Mr. Saunders and the whole, his whole team there. It was an amazing show, I loved it. I, I, I always enjoy going out and watching our kids, because they always show and highlight the best, you know, of everything that goes on in our schools. Um, and to just be able to see that and showcase this way for our whole entire community is really nice. It's almost like, uh, I would even say, like, we can invite other people from other communities to come and see them. I would really love to see that, too, happen someday. Um, I was also, um, on that campus at the same time. Uh, they had the wrestling team there, the match, I believe that's the one Board Member Critchfield attended, too. Um, so I kind of did a two-for-one, said, "Oh, here I am, I'll go there." Uh, so I was very impressed by the dedication of all our students there, you know, working so hard. Um, a lot of them have really good standings academically, they have to be able to, you know, keep those grades up, to be able to participate. And I also, um, want to give a shout-out to Coach Troncoso, who actually, uh, told me that he, um, is the coach for the female, you know, wrestling team. So I didn't even know we had a female wrestling team, but apparently we do. So, um, that's really exciting. They actually are going on to CIF, so congratulations to their team. Um, and there's still, uh, you know, a lot of things that we can do, help them out, so we'll be talking to Dr. Droudi about some of those things in the future. Um, also, congratulations to Coach Ibi and his whole team. Um, I wanna congratulate Mayfair itself for passing that WASC accreditation. Uh, you know, I know the hard hours and, and long hours that it takes to go through one of these. It, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of checking up, having, um, you know, all these interviews with all these people who are going to give you a thumbs up or thumbs down. So thank you so much to all that staff, the teachers, the parents as well, um, who make that happen for us. And, um, I also wanted to, um, uh, report that I will be joining, um, the well- And um, I also wanted to um, uh, report that I will be joining um, the WELL on top fellowship program information um, for Asian Pacific, uh, Asian American Pacific Islanders and Latino leaders, just like my fellow board member, um, Ms. Armstrong. So I'm looking forward to uh, having some great conversations about water with Ms. Armstrong as well. And um, hope everybody is, will be able to enjoy this last, this next four-day weekend. I believe we have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, right? I'm not giving any free days off, am I? All right, all right. Next week, not this week, next week. Thank you. Yes, do go to work tomorrow, please. Show up. Dr. Jodi, thank you, everyone.
So now, I, I'll go after you're done. I don't want to disrupt, disrupt your uh, your report.
I believe that was it for us.
All right. So we do have to, now that I'm thinking about it, I've just reminded that and we were reconsidering the February twenty-third date, so we probably need to take a motion for at least that one. Uh, so I, I, I recommend that the twenty-second looks pretty clear. Instead of having the twenty-third, move the meeting to twenty-second. You can check that out for a second?
Yes, absolutely. Um, fellow board members, would you mind uh, just quickly looking at your calendars and giving us a yes or a no? Um, yeah, yeah, she, yes, we need a ca-, uh, February twenty-second? So... I think February twenty-second, I'm, I'm sorry. Did you want to say something? There's a Lakewood State of the City?
Yeah, it's afternoon though.
Uh, from twelve to three? Okay, so that, what time, what were you looking at? Regular? Five o'clock? Actually, it's four, right? Four o'clock. Yes, four o'clock.
So the Lakewood State of the City is from twelve to about one-thirty, so I don't think I should interfere. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, the twenty-second. Board Member Armstrong?
We're gonna do five o'clock or four o'clock? Four or five?
Uh, we'll go ahead and stick to four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Four o'clock.
Did you have something?
No.
Okay. I have a softball game, but they won't miss me. I'm not that good, so.
I'm good with the twenty-second.
So we'll need a motion?
I make a motion that we have our meeting moved from the twenty-third to the twenty-second of February two thousand twenty-three?
Second?
Roll call, please. Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Thank you. So at this time, um, do we have any other items that we need to discuss? Thank you so much. Um, the board will um, adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-six PM. Thank you very much.